Both the City Council, a successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency, and also the Emeryville City Council. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Here.
And Mayor Atkins Hughes? Yes.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to go to the City Council meeting for a special order of the day. This is very important. One of our officers is being honored, and his child has a championship game at 7:30, so we've got to move this. Ian, if you will do the honors here.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the City Council. Tonight, we are going to recognize Brian Head as the Employee of the Quarter. The Employee of the Quarter is an employee-driven program, and his name was selected from a number of very qualified candidates. So it's with great pleasure that we ask Brian to come on up. Come on up here, Brian. All right. And we have something for the council.
And Diane, would you read the proclamation?
I have a proclamation for you, Brian. On behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Emeryville, I am proud to award Police Officer Brian Head the Employee of the Quarter Award for the fourth quarter of 2014. Officer Head started his career with the City of Emeryville on February 16, 1999, as a police officer. He is currently responsible for many administrative functions in the Police Department, including training, recruiting, public information, and other special projects. According to his nominator, Brian immediately jumps into projects and gets them moving forward. He came up with the idea of a food drive to benefit the Alameda County Community Food Bank, and working with many local businesses, he's raised over $4,000 in food. He has a well-established professional network and can always identify a resource for the most obscure question, which is an incredible asset to a small urban police department. Brian is an exemplary employee who has provided excellent service to the citizens of Emeryville for 16 years as of yesterday. As part of this employee recognition award, Officer Head receives an award plaque and a gift certificate to an Emeryville restaurant of his choice. He will also have his picture prominently displayed in City Hall and have lunch with the city manager and his department head. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, you have 12 minutes to get to your end.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope you win the game.
Thank you.
We'll go back to the City Council, I mean, the...
Successor.
The successor agency agenda. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda for the successor agency? If not, we'll move along to the consent calendar, and I understand we're being asked to pull 3.3. Is that correct? Do I, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll move the rest of it. Second.
Without exception, the consent calendar is passed. We are adjourned for the successor agency. We'll move right along to the Emeryville City Council meeting, and we've already done the call to order, the roll call, and the pledge of allegiance. We now have a presentation by Superintendent John Rubio of the Emeryville Unified School District. Superintendent Rubio, thank you so much for coming and sharing your information with us.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate the invitation. Councilwoman Davis asked if I would come and give an informational update regarding our visioning process for the school district. We had two days in the beginning of January where we had about 25 individuals who came out, and I'm going to show you a little bit of a video clip here. We had teachers, and parents, and community members. We had city staff. We had university members. And we tried to get some students, although we were having trouble based on their sports schedules. But we had a diverse group of community members and staff who worked very hard for two days, developing our direction for the school district for the next three to five years. And I want to share a little bit of that information with you through this video, and you can see the city staff, and teachers, and parents working together. And I'm going to let you listen in on a little bit of their conversation, and I'm also going to let you hear about what they thought about the process after it was done. And this is one of our parents.
It was very eye-opening, like, just to see the behind-the-scenes of what goes on and what it takes to make, you know, a mission statement, and everybody that's involved, because everybody has different points of views. And once their voice heard, so it was very intriguing to see everybody's points of view and learn where everybody's coming from, because they each have a different stake, you know, holder that's part of, you know, why they're here. So I just enjoyed being a part of that, to know that, like, I've put forth some sort of effort to start to be included.
Wonderful. Yeah, you're a parent with this, so...
Yes.
So as a parent, you feel like you're more included and more connected now?
Yes. Like, it gives me more of a basis to kind of have more information to go on versus what I just hear from my sons. You know, like, they come home and they tell me about school, or they tell me other things going on, or I get the letters, you know, and I'm always like, oh, do I have time to attend? Do I, you know, is it going to be interesting, or is it just going to be where I'm sitting there and not being engaged or involved?
Yeah.
And, you know, I felt like I was very much included and an active participant instead of just being in a meeting and listening.
You think it was worthwhile, right?
Yes, very worthwhile.
Wonderful. Thanks for doing it.
Yes. No, I would definitely do it again.
It gave me a chance to hear other people's opinion. Certain things that I thought about, I didn't realize other people were thinking about them as well. And it was also great to be included in future plans for the school.
Great. All right.
Yeah, I think it was really useful also. I think that it was good to talk with other community members, the teachers, people that I don't usually get a chance to talk to, and to kind of hear their ideas of what our school district needs and their vision of where the direction we should be going in. I thought it was very helpful, and I think it was also inspirational.
Yeah, I hesitated at first, because I have so much history with it. But it was a chance for me to hear what's going on and the dynamics of who is at the table now. The teachers and the staff met the three new administrators, and was very pleasantly surprised at the energy and the type of people, not the type of people, but the, what they're bringing. And it's a good, good, positive read for that. And the parents, the parents are very, very energized, excited, on task, really good. I have good hope for the district.
Oh, wonderful. And your hope, you're talking about out of this process, you feel like you're optimistic?
Yes. I did not have that coming in.
Wow.
Yeah. Because I didn't know. I didn't have any information.
So there's a little bit of information for you about some of our participants who we had in the process. It was great to have, it was difficult. We were all wiped out, honestly. It was like cooking with 10 people, 15 people, 20 people in the same kitchen. We had long conversations, very difficult conversations about the wording of our mission. Where should we be going? What should our goals be? So it was not easy, and it's work that we want to honor by taking it forward. This is just a draft piece right now. The school board is in the process of reviewing it. They've already actually made a couple wordsmith changes. But I wanted to get you something in your hands so you could glance at it, so you could see where we're going. And I'm very proud of the parents and the employees and the city staff who participated, because, again, it was very difficult work to come up with this. As easy as it may, may not seem like rocket science when you look at the words. There are some very heated conversations regarding everything you have in front of you regarding our mission statement. There were actually four different drafts of the mission statement, and to get four different groups of people to agree on all the words, the sentences, and what the content is, was hard, but really worthwhile, because now we have a group of people who were not just dedicated, but involved from the ground level on the direction for the school district. So we'll be taking this out to the community. We're going to have a community meeting, and information will be coming out about that on Saturday, March 7. And we'll be looking for, we'll be looking forward to sharing information about our local control plan while we're also getting reactions to this work as well. So I hope this has been informative.
So that's Saturday, March 7?
Saturday, March 7.
Where are you going to have it?
That's going to be the district office. We're going to have two times for families. We'll have 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., and we'll get that information out.
And is it an open, public meeting?
It's an open, public meeting.
Even if you don't have a family, you can come.
You can come, yes.
Any other questions for Dr. Rubio?
I have a question about the mission statement. The last sentence, "We support the whole child in partnership with the City of Emeryville and its dynamic businesses." What I want to understand, from the city side, we have programming that works in order to support the school day, right, and the school environment. What is the formalized role that businesses have, or is that what you're referring to in the mission statement?
I think what is, the mission statement really drives our work. So what it's referring to is, the businesses in Emeryville are what we want to have. We want to have a dynamic partnership with the businesses, or with the dynamic businesses. We want to make sure we're tapping into the interests and involvement of businesses to the extent that we can get that. So really, the mission statement is designed to drive our work. So whether it exists now or to whatever level is not as relevant for us as to where we want to go, I guess is what I'm saying. I don't know if that answers your question.
It kind of does, although, I mean, I have concerns, because businesses often are not very good at predicting, actually, what education needs to do and give to students, because the students that you're preparing right now are not necessarily the, those are not the skills and the labor force that businesses are engaged in. So, for example, I have a few concerns with the focus on the word innovative over and over again, and I just, I understand that people are very focused on STEM education, but I also want to make sure that that is not a word that we use that introduces instability into the district by always having to recreate the wheel and jump on the newest fad, which I think is, could be detrimental. I mean, I've had the honor of sitting in with you during your interview, and I know who you are and what you value, and so I would personally like to see something that talked about the kind of stability and grounding that we are giving folks in our district. So, you know, we're about to build a building that's supposed to give people that kind of stability. So the focus on being innovative, it's fine to a degree, but for me, the word gets used so many times, right, that I really wonder where the stability is coming from.
Absolutely. And I would encourage you to consider that, if you look at the four goals overall, and not just focus on that word innovative, I mean, really, the four goals, and the last one in particular, just, they're all important, but working together to engage students in innovative education, offering comprehensive resources to bring members of the Emeryville community together to interact and learn. So I'm not as concerned about the word innovative myself, but when I look at the totality of these four goals and the direction of where we're going, I think it really puts us on the right path, and we want to make sure that we have community members and staff engaged in creating this and believing this, that we can, that we can move forward. Stability will come with these goals, I believe, so.
Okay.
I appreciate your comments.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Rubio.
Any other questions? Scott?
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
See you later, Dr. Rubio.
We're waiting for opening day, Dr. Rubio. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? If not, we'll move along to the city manager's report.
Good evening. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on Friday evening's meeting on the proposed moratorium. You all adjourned fairly quickly on Friday, and I just wanted to follow up and just state for the members in the audience, and also those of you watching at home, that city staff, as directed by the content and the discussion of the meeting with the City Council, has already started to work on issues to bring forward to the council related to affordability, unit mix, family friendliness, and the density bonus system, and ownership as well. And we plan to bring that to the City Council as soon as we can get things together. So I just wanted to put that out there for the public. In addition, we also have an item coming to you all at the end of March on rent stabilization. So I just wanted to let you know that. And that's it.
Okay, we'll move right into the consent calendar. With the approval of the council, I would like to pull off the item 5.2 and ask Councilmember Asher to read the proclamation on African-American History Month.
Sure. Proclamation recognizing the month of February 2015 as National African-American History Month, whereas February has been designated as National African-American History Month in the United States since 1976, and whereas this year's theme for National African-American History Month is "A Century of Black Life, History, and Culture to Mark the 100th Anniversary of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, founded by historian and author Dr. Carter G. Woodson in 1915, which led to the establishment of the first event commemorating African-American History Week in February 1926. And whereas National African-American History Month is a national tradition established in response to the inadequate and oftentimes biased depiction of black history and African-American communities in the media, history books, and school curricula, which was also the purpose of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. And whereas African-Americans helped develop our nation in countless ways, some recognized and others recognized and unrecorded. And whereas African-Americans have been and continue to be leaders in advancing the essence of American democracy and justice. And whereas the contributions of African-American citizens and scientists, inventors, educators, farmers, homemakers, and explorers of earth and sky have been recognized annually during National African-American History Month. And whereas National African-American History Month is a vehicle to promote culturally relevant activities in our communities and in our schools, and offers an excellent opportunity to focus the energy, attention, commitment, and action of our entire community on ending racism and bias. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Jack Asher, on behalf of Ruth Atkins, Mayor of the City of Emeryville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize the month of February 2015 as National African-American History Month, and encourage the Emeryville community to commemorate this occasion with appropriate and meaningful activities proclaimed the 17th day of February 2015 by the mayor and the council of the City of Emeryville.
Thank you, Jack. I'd like to add that the senior center had a wonderful party on Friday celebrating Black History Month, and it had a lot of cultural events, music and dancing. Everybody had a wonderful time. So I'd like to entertain a motion on the consent calendar now.
So moved. Second.
Without exception, the consent calendar is approved. We'll move on to the Transportation Committee's report.
Vice Mayor Davis, the Transportation Committee has two items, although there's four listed, their action items, they're two in two separate locations. The first one is the approval of creation of a driveway curb cut along the south side of 47th Street in front of 107147th. We currently, the council has currently, has approved and currently exists a blue disabled curb painting there in signage. The resident has been parking off-street in a makeshift driveway. There's enough setback for the car to be parked behind a fence inside the property line, and they're requesting that, in lieu of the blue curb there, they be allowed to put a curb cut in to allow access to the driveway. And the recommendation of the Transportation Committee is to approve the curb cut.
I'd entertain a motion on that.
So moved. Second.
Without exception. Okay, Maurice, 62nd and Hollis. That's a tough one.
Vice Mayor, Mayor Davis, members of the City Council.
Whoever you are.
We've developed a striping plan for improved pedestrian safety at the intersection of 62nd and Hollis Street. What Public Works' proposal is to freshen up some of the striping. As you know, or may not know, we're getting ready for a street reconstruction project on Hollis Street. If you notice, the street's not in good shape, but the striping's very faded. And so one of the things we could do right away, immediately, to improve safety at this location, would be to freshen up the center line. It's barely visible right now. So we need to add a center line in the street. The other thing that we looked at was that we, sight visit isn't the greatest for seeing pedestrians that are crossing the street from the park side of the, of the street, on the, on the east side of the street, crossing over towards the west side of Hollis Street. So as you're approaching in a car here, you can't see the pedestrians standing at the curb. So there's a proposal to extend the red curb paint along the side to have at least two car lengths there for sight visibility. On both corners, we're looking at that as well. And then we need to freshen up the crosswalks. They're, they're in good shape now. They'll be better when we reconstruct the street, but that's something we can look at. But the other thing we wanted to do is try to come up with a, channelize the vehicles to give it a sense of narrowing. And so what we've come up with is striping along each quadrant of the street to give it a sense of narrowing. And when you do that, they call it friction for cars, so that they see a narrower area and theoretically, and it's been shown that that's one of the traffic calming solutions out there, to slow down the vehicles, to give it a sense of narrowing. So we're coming up with this proposal to stripe it, and we can have this done before we reconstruct the street, to see if it works. We could just do it in regular paint and see what kind of effect it has. So this is something we can program to do before we reconstruct the street. The other thing is that we have a perception of speeding, and what we could do is to put up a speed indicator sign for the northbound direction. There's a pole, a light pole right here, where we could put it in advance of the intersection, and then that'll give sense to the drivers, motorists, how fast they're going along that street. So what we're proposing at this time is to install that speed indicator sign, freshen up the yellow paint, paint these quadrants here, and then see how it's working. Then we're going to repave the street this summer, and then hopefully we'll get an idea of how that's all going to work out.
Maurice, this is an interim solution, because when the transit center is built, there'll be a four-way stoplight there?
Yes. Upon completion of the transit center, not the garage, but the actual lab building on top, before they can have occupancy, they would have to have a traffic signal in place.
Right. But we've received a number of complaints about this intersection. There's such a heavy use at Doyle-Hollis Park, and the Transportation Committee really thinks, we know this is an interim solution, but... Any comments from the council on this, or do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Without exception?
Without exception.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to point out one thing, that the red curb may take out an additional parking space on the side and on the opposite side of the street.
May save a life.
Okay. All right.
Vice Mayor Davis, there was one additional recommendation from the Traffic Committee on this intersection, and that was a suggestion that in the interim, there would be beacon lights put up as a crossing so that they flash. There has been some conversation with Warham of paying for some of it, but there hasn't been any hard guarantees that they will. Staff is looking for direction from at least three council members to say, go ahead and work on this type of mitigation measure, the flashing yellow lights for the crossing at this point.
I would certainly propose that we go ahead and work with Rich to see if he can get, pay for a good portion of that. So I would, I'd entertain a motion on it.
I move that we do that.
Okay.
Second.
Without exception. Thank you. Thank you, Ken. All right. No public hearings tonight. Oh, we passed it. Here we are at 7.2, citywide minimum wage draft ordinance, Charles Bryant and Michelle DeGussman. Thank you, Michelle. Oh, and before you start, Michelle, anyone who'd like to speak on this, where are they? They're over there. So if you can put one of these out, we'll speed up the process. Give you a chance to talk.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Davis, and members of the Emeryville City Council. I'm Michelle DeGussman from the Economic Development Housing Division. I'll be presenting tonight on a City of Emeryville Minimum Wage Draft Ordinance. I will also be presenting with Michael Geena from the City Attorney's Office. The purpose of tonight's report is to obtain comment and approval on a draft ordinance that will address issues of a citywide minimum wage, sick leave benefits, as well as other employment standards. As a result of this, the draft ordinance would be made available to the public to provide notice to affected parties of the impending legislation. Just as a brief background, there are two existing wage policies in Emeryville, Measure C and the Living Wage. Measure C passed in November of 2005 on a ballot initiative. It applies only to hotel employees. It relates to issues of compensation, as well as workloads, workload and protection in the event of a management change. The Living Wage was enacted in 2006. It applies to full-time city employees. It does not apply to temporary part-time employees, and essentially, anyone that has a contract with the city, so vendors, financial assistant recipients, lessies, licensees, concessionaires, franchisees. And there are certain limits associated with the size of the contract, the monetary size of the contract. The minimum hourly rate that is applied to these, and for both, it is inclusive of a health benefit, such that the actual monetary wage paid to the employee may be slightly reduced if there is a health benefit provided. So it's a total compensation number. Under Measure C, it was initially $9 an hour. Every March, it is adjusted by local CPI. It's currently, well, it will be on March 1st, $11.39 an hour. The Living Wage started at $11 an hour. It's adjusted annually on July 1st, and it is currently $14.03 per hour. This item has been considered by the council three times in the recent past. In 2006, it was considered as part of a comprehensive wage policy, including Measure C and the Living Wage. The citywide minimum wage was also considered at that time. The council directed staff to defer consideration of such an ordinance until Measure C and the Living Wage were in place in order to determine the impact, as well as the administrative burden. In August 2014, an update was brought to the council to discuss the administrative burden that was related to Measure C and the implementation, rather, not, sorry, the implementation of Measure C and Living Wage, as well as recent activity, as there's been quite a bit of activity in other jurisdictions regarding a local city, a citywide or countywide minimum wage. In January 2015, a further update was brought to council as some additional measures passed after August 2014, notably measures in San Francisco and Oakland. At that time, staff made a recommendation for parameters for a potential draft minimum wage. That recommendation was essentially to match the initial hourly wage that was, that's current, or will be in place in Oakland in March, to do some community outreach activities, specifically to community meetings, an online survey, as well as to have a January 1st, 2016 effective date. Upon consideration of the staff report and public comment on the item, council provided direction to staff at that meeting, which was to develop a draft ordinance, to base it on the Oakland Initiative that passed last November, have the initial minimum wage rate be the same rate as the city's living wage rate that would be effective as of July 1st, 2015, which is estimated to be $14.42 an hour based on the CPI change on the existing wage, and that the ordinance would be effective as of July 1st. I thought I put, but maybe I put July 2nd of this year, the first or the second. And further, that additional community meetings and impact analyses were not needed before the development of this draft ordinance. So this ordinance comes... So, this ordinance comes to you from that. And that basis was that the UC Berkeley Center on Wage and Employment Dynamics has analyzed several large California cities, including Oakland, San Francisco, as well as Berkeley that are adjacent to Emeryville, and those studies generally found that the negative effects of the increased minimum wage on employment, business operating costs, and consumer prices, were modest to negligible. In addition, the staffs of those cities also conducted staff analyses of the minimum wage as well. And before I hand it to Michael to discuss the details of the draft ordinance itself, this table you've seen before, but it's been adjusted. The green line is the proposed minimum wage rate for Emeryville, and the bottom line that you see there is the state of California, citywide, or, sorry, the state of California minimum wage. It actually will rise again in 2016 to $10 an hour, and then, some of our adjoining jurisdictions. San Francisco is the, will, is the next highest. They have set increases up till 2018, and then, they grow by a CPI growth factor. Oakland starts at $12.25, grows by CPI, and currently, Berkeley grows to just 2016. They don't have further growth, although they are considering, in their Labor Commission, changing that pattern thereafter, but they have not yet made any legislative action to that, to that effect. And with that, I'll pass it to Michael.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, council. I'm Michael Geena, Assistant City Attorney. For my portion of the presentation, I will walk you through the provisions of the draft ordinance, and I'll also highlight areas where staff is seeking city council direction. So, the ordinance for the council's consideration would have an effective date starting July 1, 2015. There would be no phase-in. The proposed wage rate, minimum wage rate, would be set at $14.42, which is the estimated rate, and it would be increased annually by CPI on July 1. Employees that would be covered by the ordinance are those who work at least two hours per calendar week within the city and who qualify for payment of minimum wage under state law. There would be no exception for the size or the type of employer. So, regardless of how many employees the employer has, or the type of employer, as in nonprofits, they would all be covered by the proposed ordinance. Regarding the accrual rate and cap, an employee would earn paid sick leave at the rate of one hour for every 30 hours worked, with a maximum accrual rate of 72 hours. That bank could be carried over from year to year. An employee would also be able to use up to the maximum, or would be able to use all of the accrued sick leave that he or she has earned over the course of the year, and there's no cap as to how much that employee may use on a yearly basis. The proposed ordinance also has a provision for hospitality service charges, similar to the Oakland Initiative, and I will go into that in a later slide. There's also a provision to take into account Measure C, which I will also touch on in a following slide. There are provisions for implementation and enforcement, and there is a waiver provision for employees who are covered by collective bargaining agreements. So, we also, in the context of this draft ordinance that we're proposing, there are two other pieces of legislation out there which we wanted to make the council aware of. One is the Oakland Initiative, which the council had directed us to model the Emeryville Initiative on. The other is a change in state law under AB 1522. And this is, this law provides for paid sick leave starting July 1, 2015. The highlights of the statute are there in front of you, and in the following slides, I'll show you where there, while the Oakland Initiative and AB 1522 largely mirror each other, there are differences between the two statutes, and those were highlighted in the staff report. I'll also highlight them in the, in the presentation. So, the first, the first area where the Oakland Initiative and AB 1522 differ are the employees that are not covered by the, by the ordinance. The Oakland model covers employees who work at least two hours a week and qualify as an employee entitled to minimum wage law under California, and this is the version that we have presented in the draft ordinance for your consideration. AB 1522 carves out the three types of employees. They're mentioned there in the, in the bullets. Specifically, I'll draw your attention to carve out for providers of in-home supportive care services and employees that are employed by the airline industry. So, one of the questions that we're asking council direction on is whether or not you would like the Emeryville ordinance to model the Oakland model or the AB 1522 model. The second area where we're seeking council direction is in the area of maximum hours that an employee can accrue for paid sick leave. Oakland has a distinction between small businesses, which are ten or fewer employees, and those, those employees can earn up to 40 hours a year. All other employer, all other employees, employees of all other businesses can earn up to 72 hours a year. AB 1522 provides that employees can earn, that all employees can earn up to 48 hours or six days of paid sick leave each year, and there's no distinction between small businesses and non-small businesses. The draft ordinance for the city council's consideration sets the maximum accrue-able hours at 72, regardless of the size of the employer. And so, we're seeking city council direction on where you'd like to set the cap. Note that the city council can allow for a higher cap than either Oakland or AB 1522. Next, the next question for the council is the number of hours that an employee may use paid sick leave per year. The Oakland model allows for no, has no limits, so that an employee may use the maximum amount that he or she has accrued. AB 1522 provides that an employee may use only up to 24 hours of paid sick leave each year. Note that AB 1522 allows employees to accrue up to 48 hours a year, but they can only use up to 24 hours a year. In the absence of any provision in the Emeryville ordinance, the provisions of AB 1522 would apply, and that would be at the 24-hour cap. The ordinance that we have presented for the council's consideration in the Emeryville draft has no limits, like the Oakland model. An employee may use up to the maximum accrued amount. And again, we are asking for some, for council direction on that issue. Use of paid sick leave. The AB 1522 allows for an employee to take paid sick leave for the care of the employee or the employee's family member, and the definition of the family member is there on the slide. The Oakland ordinance adopts the AB 1522 definition of family member, but also adds that a employee may designate an individual to also take paid, paid sick leave in order to provide care for, if that employee has no spouse or domestic partner. The employee may make, may change the designation of that individual on an annual basis. The draft ordinance that we've presented to you follows the Oakland model and allows for a designation of an individual. The start of paid sick leave. Both AB 1522 and the Oakland model allow for the use of paid sick leave beginning on the 90th day of employment, and that would be the default provision, absent any, any other changes that the city council calls for, and we're looking for some direction on when the city council would like the use of paid sick leave to be able to, employees to be able to use their paid sick leave. Hospitality service charge. This is a provision that was in the Oakland Initiative and which we've brought into the Emeryville draft as well. A service charge is a charge that's collected by a service employer, and a service employer is defined as a hotel, restaurant, or banquet facility for services provided by the employees who actually perform the service. It specifically excludes managerial employees. The draft ordinance provides that any service charges that are collected by the employer are to be paid entirely to employees who actually performed the service. Supervisors would not be allowed to take any portion of that, except to the extent that the supervisor actually performed customer service for the charge that was, that was applied. Note that hospitality service charges are independent of tips and gratuities. And we had reached out to lift up, to ask for some implementing language that they might have developed on the Oakland Initiative that might have helped guide us based on their experience in Oakland. We hadn't received any of that, any of that additional information. The ordinance also requires a posting and noticing, so the minimum wage will increase July 1 each year. Working off that July date, the city will publish the wage rates for that coming year to employers by April 1. The ordinance requires that the employers will notify the employees of those wage rates by May 1. Implementation. The ordinance allows the city to adopt regulations to implement and enforce the ordinance. Complaints to the city would be complaint-driven. An employee may report violations, and the city may investigate and pursue those violations and pursue remedies that are provided in the ordinance, and I'll get to those possible remedies in a moment. In addition, the employee always retains a private right of action. So, the employee may pursue a, his or her own action for violation of the ordinance. The remedies that are available to the city would also be available to the employee, and the employee's ability to pursue a right of action would not be dependent on any investigation or enforcement that the city is undertaking. So, the employee's ability to, to act would not be tied to whatever the city's schedule Regarding enforcement by the city, so the city, so the ordinance allows for three different tools for the city to enact or to enforce the ordinance. The first is the issuance of administrative citations and fines. There is a fine schedule that is set in the ordinance, and bullet points are there before you for various violations of the ordinance. The second tool, compliant, the second tool for enforcement that the city has is the issuance of a compliance order, in which the city would issue an order to the employer to correct specified violations of the ordinance. In this case, the employer has the right to request an administrative hearing before a hearing officer. The decision of that hearing officer would be final, and there would be no further administrative review. If a party is dissatisfied with the decision of the hearing officer, the next step after that would be, would be to file an action in Superior Court. And lastly, the city can pursue injunctive relief by filing a civil action against the, against the employer for violation of the ordinance. Remedies that are available to, for violation of the ordinance include reinstatement and back payment of, payment of back wages, fines at a set rate per day per employee whose rights were violated, interest on unpaid wages, reimbursement of the city's costs for enforcement, and additional fines for repeated violations in the same year. Staff recommendation regarding enforcement, so this has been a question, the question before the council, one of the questions that we're posing to the council is how you would like the ordinance to be enforced. And one possible, one model is to have the enforcement done by the city or the city's contractors. Another model would be to contract with a neighboring jurisdiction to have them do the enforcement for us. The staff recommendation is to have the administration, an enforcement done by city staff or its, or its contractors. Administrative citations. So, you'll note that one of the enforcement tools that I discussed earlier was the issuance of administrative citations. We currently don't have that tool in place. However, staff plans on bringing an ordinance to the city council on May 5, along with the first reading of this ordinance, of the minimum wage ordinance, which will allow for issuance of administrative citations. Measure C. So, Michelle introduced Measure C and, and its history here with the city. It was adopted by the voters in 2005, and it sets minimum wage rates and labor standards for employees of large hotels. Measure C set minimum compensation rates and, compensation rates for minimum compensation, minimum average compensation in managerial employees. They were set at the time of adoption in 2005, and it increased every year, adjusted by CPI. The current wage rates as of March 1 are listed here. In order to have the, those minimum compensation, minimum average compensation, and managerial employee compensation rates to track the minimum wage rate of the minimum wage ordinance, staff recommends that we amend the minimum compensation, minimum average compensation, and managerial employee rates at these rates set here, so that they will track together with the minimum, with the minimum wage rates yearly by CPI. Tips and reporting. So, this has been a question that was raised about how to account for employees who receive tips. So, a bit of background, tips are considered income to the employee and are subject to withholding requirements. The employee is required to report tip income to the employer on a monthly basis for income over, income in tips over $20 a month. The employer, based on the information that's reported by the employee, is required to withhold and contribute those, those computed taxes based on, based on that reporting. The failure to report subjects the employer and the employee to, to wage, to back taxes, penalties, and interest from the IRS. And so, the issue that's raised is the under-reporting of tips. In order to, in order to deal with that, the IRS has introduced what's called the Tip Determination and Education Program. And that consists of two programs, both of which are voluntary. The Tip Rate Determination Agreement Program and the Tip Reporting Alternative Commitment Program. The T-RAC program is essentially an education program, and there, the employer establishes a program for their employees to educate them on statutory requirements of reporting tips. Fairly straightforward. The Tip Rate Determination Agreement Program is a little bit more involved. This is essentially an agreement that's entered into between the employer and the IRS. The parties specify the classifications of employees that would be covered by the agreement. And essentially, what happens is that the employer and the IRS negotiate a tip, a accepted tip rate for those covered employees. For the employees that then participate in this program, the employer would use that tip rate to make a withholding calculation. And so, the covered employee would no longer be obligated to report those tips to the employer on a monthly basis. What this does is it provides a certain amount of certainty. The employee would not be subject to audit by the IRS while covered by the agreement, and the IRS has some certainty in terms of receiving a more accurate reporting on the tips, absent the agreement. You know, there, this is not a perfect program. You know, the IRS, this, the tip rate is an average, so there may be employees that may be earning more in tips above and below that average line. And also, the tip rate is based on anticipated versus actual earnings. That being said, the IRS has determined that this is better than nothing, that they are getting more accurate accounting of tip income from the employee than they would absent the program. And this is just a sheet that sort of outlines what a typical, you know, what the, what the, a part of the agreement would look like. It's a little hard to read, but on your left, you see the occupational category, which would list the various types of employees that would be covered by the program. It includes their shifts, and then, what the anticipated tip rate would be. Note that this Tip Rate Determination Agreement is a voluntary agreement. That is, the employer and the, and the IRS agree to it, and they negotiate what that tip amount would be. Thereafter, the employees' participation in this program Thereafter, the employees' participation in this program is also voluntary. And so an employee has these protections from IRS audit, but only for the period of time that the employee agrees to participate in this program. How does this apply to the proposed Emeryville ordinance? It is one possible exception that this council could consider to the payment of minimum wage. So the issue is, for your consideration, is that you have a body of employers out there who say that they are paying their -- who say that they are paying their employees less than the proposed minimum wage of $14.43 an hour. However, if you take into account that base wage plus tips, the employer -- the employee would actually be earning at least the proposed Emeryville minimum wage, if not more. One way for the city to determine if that were to be true would be to see if the employee, for example, has participated in this program. It is -- it is one tool that we could use in order to verify that employers are actually -- you know, that employees are actually earning at least the minimum wage in the That is the end of my presentation. I'll hand it back over to Michelle. Thank you.
Michael, before you leave, any questions for Michael before he sits down?
No.
Not right now, no?
I'll come back at the end of this as well.
You'll not leave the room, Michael.
We have a list of questions for you that we'll highlight as a recap, so you'll see me again. Thank you.
Okay. Michael jumped the gun on my slides there. Okay. So Michael presented to you essentially on the contents of the draft ordinance and how it interacts with existing legislation. And what I'm going to talk about in this section is not included in the ordinance, but in the work on this, some possible categories that might be considered for either exemption or phased implementation, essentially due to their vulnerability to -- due to certain aspects. And there are sort of three main categories. The first category is -- or rather are businesses that have limited resources to comply, either due to their scale or their operating structure. So scale is sort of obvious from the name. Small businesses have less ability to react in terms of capital accumulation and being nimble in terms of changing their product and service pricing or accessing bridge funding. Another group that would be vulnerable to this would be nonprofits. They may need some additional time to amend grant provisions, and the typical foundation and grant funding cycles don't coincide with the anticipated effective date of July 1, and many of them are funded at least partially for their labor costs through those type of funding sources. Another category to consider for possible exemption would be limited-duration training or internship programs. These programs are not designed to support families. They're really primarily designed to provide workforce developments or training, and in order to allow essentially employers or businesses to continue to provide these kind of programs, it may be a consideration to have these be considered for possible exemption. And then finally, businesses that provide compensation at or above the minimum wage other than direct payroll. The first one would be the extensive discussion Michael just had regarding employees that receive tip income, as well as the -- as considered under our living wage model, a place where there's health care benefits provided as part of a total compensation This primarily relates to phased implementation rather than simple exemption, and this harkens back to the UC Berkeley studies that were referenced earlier. Generally concluded that the costs of minimum wage increases are offset through increased worker productivity, retention, and minor increases in consumer prices. However, the proposed rate of $14.42 that would be in place by July 1 is significantly higher than any minimum wage rate that we certainly found in our investigations. That would be in place in 2015. The 1225 is, as examples, the 1225 rate in Oakland is about 36% higher than the current state minimum wage, whereas the proposed Emeryville rate is 59% higher. None of the cities that were recently studied by UC Berkeley analyze an increase of this magnitude within the first year of implementation, and there again could be a potential need for additional time to absorb increased labor costs, particularly for those businesses that were referenced earlier that may be more sensitive. And one possible scenario to consider for inclusion in the draft ordinance would be breaking up the effective period over two six-month increments, essentially increasing it to 1225 on July 1, 2015, which would mirror what would be in place in Oakland at the time, increasing it again six months later to 1350 on January 1, and then increasing it on July 1, 2017, so that it would meet -- oh, sorry. That should be July 1, 2016, to meet the -- what would be then current. So it would essentially offset it by about a year, but it would catch up by the first year, after the first year. Next is the impacts of minimum wage ordinance as contemplated. The two main costs related to administration would be administration and enforcement, and the estimate for Emeryville would be one FTE, or the equivalent cost for a contract employee, at about $125,000 per fiscal year, and this is inclusive of benefits. So this is salary and benefits for a full-time employee. And education and outreach materials estimated at approximately $35,000, and that's related to both production and distribution. And those costs were essentially estimated using a lot of the similar costs from what's experienced in Berkeley and Oakland. And then the issue would be also city compliance with the ordinance in terms of a fiscal impact. As noted, we have a living wage ordinance, but that actually only applies to full-time employees. Most of the unrepresented part-time employees in the community services department actually make less than the proposed $14.42 per hour. So the increased wages would result in an annual increased payroll cost of approximately $80,000 per year. Additionally, there could be issues of wage compaction for those employees that are in the same classification but at the higher end of the wage rate. They may wish to have some additional adjustment in order to offset that increase. So there could be a potential impact from those -- on those salary schedules as well. So the total costs for the current fiscal year would be the approximately $35,000 in education and outreach materials. That would be the sort of the first initial push to notify all businesses of the change and ensure that posting met the requirements of the ordinance. From fiscal '15, '16, and ongoing would be the additional cost for administration and enforcement, as well as the additional wages and benefits over the existing baseline. And both of those would have, well, particularly the wages and benefits, would have the annual adjustments for city staff based on the CPI adjustments in the living wage. The anticipated costs, the total costs of $240,000 are currently unbudgeted. So the actions that would be ultimately necessary in order to bring those about would be amending the current operating budget to allocate the $35,000 from the general fund reserve balance for the education outreach materials. And then for the mid-cycle adjustment, there would be an amendment into that budget for the implementation and enforcement costs of $205,000. The proposed timeline for implementing the ordinance based on the direction from council to have the ordinance be effective by July 1 is presented here. I'll run through it. Obviously, tonight, we're looking to the council to provide additional direction on the draft ordinance, as well as provide staff approval to distribute it to affected parties. And then when that occurs, we hope to, by the end of this month, mail the draft ordinance directly to all licensed businesses. The draft ordinance will also be posted on the website. It will be discussed at the Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting scheduled for March 4, either March 17 or April 1. The staff will come to the council to provide the input, any input that we have received based on the distribution of the draft ordinance. With the public hearing for the first reading of the ordinance to occur, the first meeting in May, the second meeting in May would be the second reading. The ordinance itself would be effective July 1. It leaves staff just a little over a month to put together the various steps that are necessary for implementation, including the development of the administrative instructions, which are the real groundwork of how we would do the day-to-day implementation of it, engage staffing for administration and enforcement, as well as develop all the support materials that would be necessary for implementation. The notification posters, complaint forms, and probably set up, you know, information for providing guidelines to anyone that's inquiring about the new ordinance. And then July 1, the ordinance would go into effect. Michael is back, as promised.
You have further comments, Michael?
I do. I just wanted to highlight for you the various questions that we're asking the council to provide us direction on regarding the ordinance itself. So I'll start with the definition of the employee. The question that we're posing to the council is if the council would like to adopt the narrower definition of employee under AB 1522, which carves out health care providers and workers in the airline industry from those that would be covered by the minimum wage ordinance. The second question is the cap that you would like to set on the number of paid sick leave hours an employee may accrue. AB 1522 allows for an employee to accrue up to 48 hours or six days a year. Oakland allows an employee to accrue up to 40 hours for small businesses and 72 hours for all other employers. So this is really a two-part question. Would you like to distinguish between small business employers and all other employers in setting a cap, and what would that cap be? The next question for the council is the maximum hours of usable paid sick leave. So Oakland provides no limit. That is, that the employee can use up to the amount of paid sick leave he or she has accrued. The AB 1522 allows -- sets a limit of usable paid sick leave at 24 hours a year. And the draft ordinance that we provided you is based on the Oakland model with no maximum usable limit up to the accrued amount. Next item is use of paid sick leave. Would the city council like to include a -- or allow an employee to designate an individual to -- for whom the employee may use paid sick leave? And finally, the start date of the use of paid sick leave. So AB 1522 and the Oakland ordinance providing a 90-day sort of 90-day period in which the employee has to wait before actually using the accrued sick leave. The question for the council is if you would like to have that provision in the Emeryville ordinance, or if you would like to allow an employee to start using accrued sick leave immediately upon passage or the effective date of the Emeryville ordinance, or some other date. So those are the questions that we're posing to you, and Michelle has a few more.
Just a few more, and this is the last slide of our presentation. The final sort of questions direction, we're looking more generally, is does the council wish to include exemptions and/or phased implementation for any of the following: nonprofits, internships or training programs, small businesses, businesses in which employees receive tips, or businesses that provide health care benefits? Is the implementation timeline proposed by staff acceptable? And does the council have any other changes or revisions to the draft ordinance? With that, that concludes our presentation on the draft citywide minimum wage, and we are both available for questions.
Thank you, Michelle and Michael. What's the pleasure of the council? My bias is to hear from the public.
Can I ask a couple of clarifying questions first? So I just wanted to -- sorry if I'm surprising you. I hope I'm not. It's just for the benefit of the public when they do come up to speak. I see some small business owners in the audience, and I just want to see how we arrived at the definition of small business, both for the city and then in terms of -- and I actually am not sure what the number we're talking about for the accrued paid sick leave.
So the draft ordinance that -- the draft ordinance for the Emeryville version has no definition for small business. The small business definition is in the Oakland Lift Up Initiative, and that was set at 10 or fewer employees. And that was for the purposes of setting how many hours a -- how many -- the maximum amount of accrued sick leave that an employee can accrue per year. So in Oakland, a employee of a small business may accrue only up to 40 hours a year, and all other employees would be able to accrue up to 72. The draft ordinance that we presented for you has no distinction between small business and non-small business, and so all employees, regardless of employer's size, would be able to accrue up to 72 hours.
And then if we were to consider exemptions or phasing for small businesses, is that how we came up with that 10 employees or less number was from?
Yeah, the 10 employees or less number came from the Oakland Lift Up ordinance. There are other measures of small business. The Small Business Association has a different measure. I believe it is businesses that gross $2 million or less, and there's various -- various different organizations have different ways of defining small business.
Great. And I just invite anyone from the public, if there's anyone here who had anything to do with Lift Up, if you'd like to give any rationale for a certain number, I'd love to hear it.
That's it, Michael. Okay, Michelle. We'll start with the public comments, and what I'll do is call five people at a time. If you would help us out here, line up, and we'll move this along. We have 20 speaker cards, so we've got a ways to go. I'll call the names now. Jennifer Lin, Steve Gilbert, Jessica Lamach, Nancy Bickel, and John Tibbetts.
Hi, good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jennifer Lin. I'm with the East Bay Alliance for Sustainable Economy, and I'm the deputy director there and with an organization that's dedicated to creating a just economy in the East Bay based on good jobs and healthy communities. I am very heartened by a lot of what I see in the draft ordinance tonight, and really want to thank the staff for their work and the council for your direction. As you may know, eBay, along with the Community Labor Coalition, helped pass Measure C that's been mentioned here tonight, as well as we were part of the Lift Up Oakland Coalition that helped pass Measure FF, the Oakland Minimum Wage Paid Sick Day and Service Charge Protection Ordinance, by an overwhelming 82% last November. And we're not stopping there. We're working diligently with the city to make sure that it's implemented in a good way and enforced as well when it goes into effect on March 2. I just had a few comments to make on the draft ordinance and to potentially some clarifications. So first, we really are glad to see that Emeryville is taking an aggressive approach when it comes to working poverty, and for us, a clear path to $15 an hour, at least by the year 2018, is important. As you know, there are many workers here in Emeryville that work in low-wage industries, in service industries, in retail, and that's all concentrated here in Emeryville. So it's important, as a regional leader, to be taking a step in the right direction and lifting workers out of poverty. Second, we want to ensure that there are no exemptions and no carve-outs. So Emeryville's policy should apply across the board for every businesses, both for ease of implementation, but also out of fairness. Any form of tip credit is illegal in California, and so I'm a little bit concerned and want to understand more about the tip credit or tip rate determination agreement that was mentioned tonight. We would encourage that tip workers be included in the minimum wage, that there be no carve-outs or exemptions should be granted through the policy, because we believe that every worker deserves a minimum wage. Last, on the paid sick days, we also believe that every worker deserves paid sick days, that no worker should be carved out of the paid sick day ordinance, and that there should be no limits to the use of paid sick days. The Oakland measure doesn't speak to it. There should be no limits in Emeryville as well. well, and that there be minimum caps on accrual or banking of paid sick days at nine days or 72 hours. We encourage Emeryville to also mirror the paid sick day ordinances in Oakland and San Francisco and allow workers to have a domestic partner or other person designated for whom they can use paid sick days to provide care for. So I just want to thank you for your work. We will continue to stay engaged and look forward to working with the city to implement this.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Nancy Bickel, President of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville. So as we wrote you, we support the proposal to raise the minimum wage, to level comparable to adjacent cities, and to move towards a living wage. And we think that the wages of workers, public and private, in the city should be sufficient to actually live and support a family, without the worker having to hold more than one full-time job, without having to supplement the family income with government subsidies for healthcare, food, housing, and other essentials. If for practical or political reasons the city cannot reach this goal immediately, the minimum wage should continue to move towards the goal of a living wage as soon as possible. At the same time, we understand that before making a final decision on this proposal, the city council and the city staff are planning to give a full hearing to the points of view and the economic needs of all the stakeholders involved, including workers, small business people, large business people, customers, and others, and that I assume you will adjust your proposal appropriately. We are very eager, in the League of Women Voters, to pay more attention to what you're doing in Emeryville. You're bustling and thriving and expanding, and to that end, we welcome any citizens of Emeryville who would like to join the League, male or female, of any age. You're welcome to join us, and you can find out how to do that on our website. And if you're not quite ready to do that, you can subscribe absolutely free to our emails. So we hope to be more in touch with both the council and the citizens, and delighted to see you making this effort.
Good evening, Council members. My name is John Tibbetts. I'm the Managing General Partner of the Oaks Card Club in Emeryville. One of, it's been in Emeryville since the 1890s. My sisters and I are third-generation operators of the club. My son, who's here with me tonight, is fourth generation, now acting as my general manager at the club. The Oaks is one of Emeryville's oldest businesses, largest employers, and has been the single largest taxpayer in the city for quite a number of years. We're the only business in Emeryville that pays 10% of its gross revenue to the city, which supports fire, police, and other social services throughout the city. Through the cardroom tax, the Oaks contributes more than $2 million annually to city revenues in support of these essential city services. In addition, the Oaks has also donated thousands of dollars annually to community groups and local causes. I'm here tonight to talk about the minimum wage. I am not here to tell Emeryville not to pass the minimum wage. In fact, I support Emeryville passing a minimum wage that would help, you know, all families support themselves throughout the city. But however, the Oaks, being in the gambling business, is a unique business, to say the least, in the city. We're the only one in the city, the only one in any town around, I suppose. Many of my employees appear to be minimum wage, or maybe only a little bit above minimum wage, but it's really an illusion. Most make far more than that, because the gambling industry is such a highly tipped industry. My gaming floor employees, like dealers, chip runners, floormen, are all covered by a formal IRS tip agreement called a GitCA, Gaming Industry Tip Compliance Agreement. It's different than the ones Michael showed you there, because it's unique to my industry, and so you might not have looked at it, but it's what most of the gaming industry employees have. And through this, all the tips are put directly on their paychecks, fully taxed, go through the payroll department, so the amount of money that the people are earning at the club can be quantified. Such as the largest single type of employee I have are dealers, who are tipped virtually on every hand or every round of play, and many hands are dealt every hour at the Oaks. A dealer will commonly make, you know, $12 to $15 an hour or more in tip money at the club that they take home in addition to their tips, so they're making far in excess of $20 an hour, right there. An increase to the base minimum wage for the gaming employees who are under this IRS GitCA agreement would increase my labor costs possibly by more than 50%, literally adding millions of dollars that could not be absorbed by the business. The Oaks can't pass these costs directly onto the customers, because we're already charging among the highest rates in the Bay Area for our poker games. And our table hours have already been reduced in the last number of years by 15%, 20% because of increased competition from Indian casinos and other cardrooms in town.
Your time is up, John. Thank you very much for coming forward.
I would just ask the city to consider lower, you know, considering tips, as is on the board, to help lower the rate for my gig.
Madam Mayor and Member of the City Councils, my name is Jessica Lamack, and I'm here on behalf of the California Restaurant Association and the Emeryville Members. This evening, we wish to express our concerns over the draft proposal to increase the city's minimum wage to $14.42, which represents a 59% increase over the current state level. The restaurant industry has been struggling over the last several years to cope with the worst economy since the Great Depression. Raising the minimum wage forces restaurants to have no choice but to adjust their business structure and budget plans, which may mean to forego expansion and/or reducing operational hours and opportunities for their employees. In addition, the state minimum wage just increased and is scheduled to increase again to $10 in January of 2016. The restaurant industry is one of the most competitive business industries within the state of California, and it operates on a razor-thin profit margin. For every dollar a restaurant makes in sales, the restaurant owner only keeps less than six cents. Our local members here in Emeryville are busy working on ways to absorb the state's increases and maintaining their workforce by continuing to price their products in an affordable manner. We propose that any wage increase within the city of Emeryville be done in a gradual and phased-in manner. A majority of our members in Emeryville are sit-down restaurants with full service, and the employees in these restaurants that are being compensated solely on hourly wages are the back-of-the-house employees, the cooks, the prep chefs, and the dishwashers. These employees already earn well above the state minimum wage and are making, at minimum, the wage that's proposed in the ordinance. The employees who receive the base check of the minimum wage, which is currently $9 in the state of California, are the front-of-the-house employees. These are the employees that are the servers and the bartenders. But these employees are the tipped staff, so they're already making, in addition to their paycheck, $20 to $60 more. So this proposal will only affect the front-of-the-house that's already making a higher wage due to tips. As a result, we propose that you look at the concept of total compensation, which many cities are looking at, which is what Michael went over, which is the tipped exemption. Whereas the highly compensated and regularly tipped employees who are reported, who have the reported pay wages, including tips, who also earn no less than the proposed minimum wage that's within the ordinance, be subject just to the state level hourly. This would stop the imbalance from overcompensating the front-of-the-house and allow the restaurant employees and owners to continue to increase wages for the back-of-the-house employees. We strongly encourage the city council to consider the minimum wage issue in a holistic manner.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, the next five people are Chris Hilliard, Bill Reuter, Elizabeth Esquibel, George Hernandez, and Maria Aguilar.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council members. My name is Chris Hilliard, and my wife and I own Farley's on 65th, which is at 65th in Vallejo. We're proudly celebrating our five-year anniversary this May. We've donated over $3,000 to Emeryville nonprofits in those five years. We love being in Emeryville, and we wish to stay here. Our employees earn $17 to $20 an hour with tips, and in addition, we do provide them health benefits on top of that. We're here to advocate for a regional minimum wage, a consistent regional minimum wage. We support raising the minimum wage to the two largest neighboring cities, Oakland and San Francisco, which would be $12.25, per the city staff recommendation. A consistent wage allows us to compete with our neighboring small businesses in Oakland, which is half a block away. I have a little map. Can I distribute that? Am I allowed to? Give it to the clerk. As you'll see on the map, we're on 65th, and a line runs down Vallejo. We have Starbucks on one side, which is an international corporation. On the other side, we have neighboring Oakland businesses, which are Tribou and Actual Cafe. As you can see and all know, the Oakland minimum wage is going to $12.25, May 1st, or, no, sorry, March 1st. San Francisco, it goes to $12.25, May 1st. At $14.42 an hour, if the Emeryville wage went to that, our prices would be 20% higher than the neighboring businesses right down the street. In addition, Farley's owns a location in Oakland and San Francisco, and we want to be able to treat all our employees fairly by providing a consistent wage across all three cities. Independent of the Emeryville minimum wage, when the Oakland wage goes to $12.25, we'll be raising our employees to $12.25 along with them. Again, you know, we support a consistent regional minimum wage of $12.25. Thank you.
Bill Reuter, a longtime Emeryville resident, and I'm speaking tonight as a representative of the Residents United for a Livable Emeryville. And I'm pleased to confess that the steering committee for that group is out of date, because, in fact, that the city staff report that's before you tonight has, in fact, gone a long way towards the kinds of things that we were interested in. Let me reinforce that slightly. Basically, we're interested in a regional approach to the problem. We're very much interested in getting us on a track here in Emeryville towards $15 an hour for a basic minimum wage setting by 2018. We're also open to the idea of amelioration or adjustment for businesses that have special problems, and I can see all that kind of thing already built into or made possible by the draft report before you, and that's what pleases me. We thought we were going to have to ask for something that might not have been in the works, and I'm delighted to see that the city staff, and I appreciate their work, they're on the track, and they're after the same kind of goals that we are. We all know that historically, in the United States and in the state of California, basic minimum wages have fallen way behind what is needed to live, and it's especially an acute problem here in the Bay Area. So we're on the right track. Best of luck in crafting the final version of the minimum wage ordinance, and I was pleased with what I heard tonight.
Step forward, please.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Elijah Esquibel. I've worked in Emeryville for the past 12 years and lived in Emeryville for the past two. I currently work in Berkeley, and I've also worked in San Francisco. I work at the Hotel Shattuck Plaza, and I work at the Hilton Garden Inn in Emeryville. I get paid $13 an hour at the non-union job. I get paid $10.53 at the union job. Asking that you not cut out the tip workers. There should be a base level. I would like to work more at Emeryville, but there's not, there's not as much work as there used to be. And having the minimum wage be moved up to something that is comparable to other cities, and like Berkeley doesn't have a tip-out exemption, Oakland doesn't have a tip-out exemption, I think you should follow their model of moving everybody up to the minimum wage. If not, it's not a minimum wage. There's a lot of different exemptions, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Step forward.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Maria Aguilar. Soy trabajadora aquí en Emeryville. Trabajo de housekeeper.
Hi, my name is Maria Aguilar. I am a worker here at the Hyatt House in Emeryville. I'm a housekeeper.
Vengo para apoyar a un aumento de 14 dólares a todos los compañeros trabajadores de Emeryville. Algunos ganan ocho, nueve dólares.
I've come here to support the recommendation for the raise of the minimum wage to $14 an hour for all of the workers here in Emeryville. Many make around $9 an hour.
Y de eso mismo, hay que pagar un seguro médico.
And from that wage, they even have to pay for health insurance.
Yo estoy en mi trabajo, pertenezco a la unión, y tenemos un seguro médico y muchos beneficios. Entonces, apoyo para este aumento de 14 dólares para todos los compañeros trabajadores que tienen un sueldo muy bajo. A todo, a todo trabajador parejo de Emeryville. Y se los agradezco antemano. Ustedes nos han ayudado mucho a nosotros desde el tiempo de Wilfin, el hotel Wilfin. La ciudad de Emeryville nos ha ayudado mucho a nosotros, y creo que este aumento de 14 dólares va a pasar, porque son muy excelentes. Muchas gracias.
So as a member of the union, I have health insurance and a lot of benefits, but I really want to support raising the minimum wage up to $14 an hour for all of the other workers in Emeryville who make very low wages. I want to thank you all. The Emeryville, the city of Emeryville has supported us a lot over the years, going back to the years when our hotel was called the Woodfin, that you all remember, and thank you.
Thank you.
The next five speakers will be Ty Hudson. Oh, there you are. Okay. Kayvan Sabeegi, Wayling Huber, Elsa Portillo, and Ron Freund. Good timing.
Hi. Good evening, Vice Mayor Davis and City Council. My name is Ty Hudson. I am with Unite here, Local 2850, and we represent the workers at the Hilton Garden Inn and at the Hyatt House here in Emeryville. I want to thank and congratulate the Emeryville City Council for taking such leadership on this issue and moving so quickly to address the problem of income inequality, along with other Bay Area cities. There's a few points that, about the choices you're going to make about the minimum wage that I'd like to speak to. One of them is, was covered pretty well, the service charge protection. We think that is a crucial, crucial part of the ordinance, especially given the news that many restaurants around the Bay Area in cities that don't have service charge protection are talking about using that to essentially circumvent the minimum wage increases. We have, do have some ideas about a slight tweak to the language that's in Measure FF that we'd be happy to share with city staff. But then I especially want to talk about the issue of carve-outs, in particular for tipped employees. We represent a lot... We represent a lot of tipped employees, and we know that tips are variable, tips are not always reliable, and people have lots of expenses, including at non-union places, having to pay for health insurance or health care out of their pocket. And so to exempt tipped employees would be to leave a lot of people behind and to basically fail to address the issues that this ordinance is attempting to address. It's also, a tip credit is prohibited by California's Labor Code, and other city attorneys have concluded that they can't do that kind of exemption in their minimum wage increases. And any other carve-outs are just, you know, leaving a lot of people behind. Anything that leaves people behind permanently defeats the purpose that I think you guys are trying to accomplish. And just to sum up, we do, we support the path to 15 that you're on. We support the service charge. We support no exemptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ty, very much.
My name is Kayvan Sabeegi. I have been a waiter or server since 2008, since I got out of the military. I worked at Emeryville Hyatt House for six months, or eight months, actually, where I made $12 an hour plus tips, and still struggled to pay my rent, buy food, and working in restaurants is hard work. If you can get 40 hours, that's great, but you still can't afford, you know, to live on your own. I support the minimum wage increase, even though minimum wage isn't a living wage. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Davis, Council. I'm here, my name is Wayling Huber, and I'm the president of Unite Here Local 2850. And I'm here to talk about two issues related to the minimum wage increase. One is the collective bargaining waiver, and the other is the question about the tip credit. So I support the staff's recommendation regarding having a collective bargaining opt-out. In a situation where workers have a seat at the table and are able to bargain over their wages and their benefits, it's often very useful for us to have the flexibility to negotiate a full package that may or may not be exactly aligned with the minimum wage. In our case, Measure C, because we represent both the Hyatt House workers and the Hilton Garden workers, we have waived Measure C in both of those hotels because the overall package for the workers is worth about $22.50, which is significantly more than the minimum rate provided for in Measure C between their health care and their pension and their wage rates and other benefits. It was very important for the workers to be able to have that flexibility to put money into their retirement and their family's health care. And those contracts are ratified by an overwhelming majority of workers, and so they have a real voice in having that. But we also need to have the flexibility to be able to say one way or another. You know, in the Oaks situation where we've been in negotiations since 2012 for the food service workers, the employer has not paid any more in health care since 2011, and the workers haven't gotten a raise since 2009. So we have dishwashers who are currently making just over $11 an hour, who are being asked to pay over $500 a month for their health care for their families. And this is an untenable situation. About a third of the workers have dropped coverage in the last year, have gone to Obamacare because they can't afford the coverage through their employer. And so we need to be able to, you know, make those decisions, and workers have to be able to have a voice about whether or not to waive the minimum wage. And so I support that policy. I would say one more thing about tip credits. I can't speak for dealers at the Oaks Club, but I can speak for waitresses and waiters. They are also participants in the IRS gaming tip assessment, and their assessment is $5.75 per hour. So the IRS, and I know from other casinos that we represent, you know, will sit in a casino for a month and make the workers come to them at the end of every shift and empty out their pockets and turn it inside out and show them how much they made in tips that day. And the IRS will calculate that over the course of the month and come up with a number. So $5.75 plus $9 is still not a living wage.
Thank you. Oh, Ty, you're back again.
Just as a translator.
Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Elsa Portillo, y trabajo para Hyatt House, y vengo a apoyar a todos los trabajadores para que ganen a 14 dólares todos.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elsa Portillo. I work here in Emeryville at the Hyatt House. I came to support the proposal for all workers in Emeryville to make at least $14 an hour.
Sí, sí, porque ganando el salario mínimo uno va así rasadito con su dinero y ya como ahorita pues yo voy a ponerme feliz porque todos mis compañeros ganen lo justo pues porque se trabaja muy duramente y así que así uno sale ya cabal con sus deudas.
So I support raising the minimum wage because I know that for people who work for very low wages, you basically have no money for anything. And now that we have better wages at the Hyatt House, my coworkers and I, you know, we can live better, we can pay down our debts.
Y ese yo voy a estar feliz porque yo ahorita estoy feliz porque pertenezco a la Unión y pues yo sé que tienen muy corazoncito bueno y les agradecería mucho y hasta pronto.
I'm really happy now, as a union, to have, you know, as a union member. I want to thank you all. I know you all have really good hearts, and I hope that we can accomplish this soon.
Sí. Gracias. Thank you. Ron.
Hello. Hi. I haven't spoken in a while. My name's Ron Freund. I'm a resident of Emeryville. I wanted to welcome Diane Martinez, a new member, and also Scott Donahue for upholding the token white male representation on the city council. Needless to say, there's vast inequality in our country. I think we know that the share of wealth owned by the upper 1/10th of 1% has reached the highest level since the New Deal. So it's clear that the city has to take action, and it has to do it in a fairly equitable manner. So I just want to point out a few things which have been already mentioned, but emphasize the number one. We need to ensure that the process is very broadly circulated, and the community has as much time as possible within reason to comment on this and make it as equitable as possible. What we don't want to see is adopting an ordinance that has negative unintended consequences. Secondly, Scott, at the last meeting, raised the issue of creating a regional approach to this, to avoid the idea of cities competing with each other, where it would create job losses in those towns that have higher minimum wage guidelines. I'm not sure why the city can't serve as a catalyst for trying to work on a regional approach. I know some people don't think it's possible, but I think we've heard from several businesses here about the practicality or impracticality of one city being at a higher level than another. So I'd encourage you to pursue that approach. Thirdly, I don't think all businesses should be painted with the same brush. Clearly, we don't want to hear from Pixar and Novartis shedding crocodile tears, but I think the concerns of small business need to be heard. And I'm not sure about the definition. I think Diane's on the right track. We need to find out what a real, reasonable definition of small business is. We need to look at a graduated and phased-in approach for those, not an exemption, but a graduated, phased-in approach for small businesses, some nonprofits. And I will also put in the idea of people on fixed income who reside at large associations, where the homeowners association would simply have to raise assessments. Give us, you know, give those people some time as well to adjust. I think that's consistent with the lift-up goals of 15 by 2018. So I think we can harmonize this and do the right thing in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers will be Maria Gonzalez, Ricardo Vasquez, Brian Donahue, Cole Tibbetts, and John Nimmick.
Mi nombre es Maria Gonzalez. Trabajo aquí en Emeryville in Hyatt House.
Hi, my name, good evening. My name is Maria Gonzalez. I work here in Emeryville at the Hyatt House.
Tengo trabajando durante ocho años. Los primeros cinco años trabajé en Woodfin, y ahora los últimos tres en Hyatt House.
I've been working there for eight years. For the first five years, it was the Woodfin, and now I have, we have three years working at the Hyatt House.
Y yo vengo aquí a apoyar al aumento de sueldo porque pienso que es necesario de ya no sobrevivir. Necesitamos vivir y vivir mucho mejor. Necesitamos ganar un poquito mejor para tener mejores beneficios para que nuestros hijos y nuestras familias vivan mejor. No sobrevivir nada más.
So I'm here tonight to support the minimum wage increase because I believe that people need to, not only just to survive, but to really make a good living and support our kids. And that's, in order to do that, in order to live a better life, we need to make a little bit more money so that we're not just surviving.
Yo hemos luchado mucho por tener un contrato en Hyatt House. Pertenezco a la Unión, y los beneficios han sido muy, muy buenos. El más importante que a mí me ha beneficiado ha sido el seguro médico. El aumento de sueldo me ha ayudado mucho a tratar, a apoyar a mi hijo en sus estudios, que son bastante caros, pero gracias al sueldo que tenemos ahora, le he dado su programa a mi hijo.
So it was a really long struggle to get what we have now in our union contract. I'm a union member. The most important benefits to me have been the health insurance, and also the higher wage has helped me to support my son's studies in school. It's very expensive, but thanks to the higher wage I make now, I've been able to support him in that.
También me gustaría que las demás personas, desde el más pequeño trabajador hasta el que está más arriba, tengan los mismos beneficios que nosotros hemos tenido, y que tengan las mismas oportunidades que tenemos para trabajar, para ganar un sueldo digno, y vernos todos con más dignidad y tener un mejor futuro.
So I want to say that I support all workers, from the lowliest worker to the highest, to make, to have the wages and benefits that we have, and to be able to have greater dignity and a better future.
Y les aseguro que teniendo un mejor sueldo uno va con mucho más ganas a trabajar, con mucho más dignidad, y necesitamos tener mucho mejor respeto como trabajadores. Como persona lo tenemos, pero como trabajadores necesitamos que valoren nuestros patrones, nuestro trabajo. ¿Y cómo? Dándonos un mejor sueldo para tener una mejor cara de satisfacción al trabajar.
And I swear to you that when we make a higher wage, we go with much more motivation to work. We need everybody to be able to have more dignity and respect as workers. We need our bosses to really value the work that we do.
Eso es todo. Gracias.
And that's all. Thank you.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Cole Tibbetts. I am the general manager at the Oaks Card Club. You heard earlier from my father. I'm going to attempt to pick up where he ran out of time. To be clear, we do support the increase of minimum wage for employees in Emeryville. We're only asking for an exemption for gaming floor employees who, in actuality, make far more than the proposed amount. We're not asking to include food servers, any of the restaurant employees. That's a different exemption. We're not asking for that. They are a different business. We're just asking for the gaming floor employees, who, as my father started to explain, clearly can make more money than that. I'm just afraid that if this passes, we will have to reduce, drastically reduce, the workforce, the amount of shifts, and it's going to negatively impact some of the same employees you're admirably trying to help. You know, I know a letter was received by you guys. Hopefully, you can read it and see that the Gitka agreement that was discussed earlier, you know, documents the amount that all these gaming floor employees are making. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Brian Donahue, did you want to speak?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to offer a tip to Councilmember Davis on how to pronounce my last name. It's pronounced the same way as your colleague over here, since you, you know, mispronounce my name all the time. Just so you know, in the future, it's the same pronunciation as that guy's name. Okay. So we heard from Mr. Tibbetts, who runs the Oaks Club here, that he's going to have to drastically reduce his workforce. He can't absorb this, increase his labor cost by 50%. Now, Mr. Tibbetts is a fine man. I've met him several times. He's a nice guy. I believe he's given all of you money. I may be wrong in that, but at least most of you has given you money for your reelection campaigns or election campaigns, be that, as it is. So that's interesting. However, we've got to remember what Mr. Tibbetts told all of us here several years ago before we elected to put on the ballot, an ballot initiative to raise card club taxes by almost as much as the Bay Area average on card club taxes, because Emeryville is way lower. And so we proposed raising it to almost the Bay Area average. Mr. Tibbetts, at the time, told us that it was going to drive him out of business, that he can't pay higher taxes, you know, he can't absorb those kind of costs, and we know how that turned out. We did, in fact, vote to raise the taxes on the Oaks Club, and he's still in business more than a decade later. So, I mean, I think he's a nice guy, but I frankly, I don't think we should listen to him. I don't think he's necessarily telling us the truth. Okay, I'd like to chime in about the service charge protections. This idea is a new idea to me, this idea that employees are taking employees' tips, tipped workers' tips, is just so reprehensible to me. And I hate the idea that we're going to have any part of that. So whatever we do, we've got to make sure we have the service charge protection regarding this regional, work for a regional minimum wage hike. I agree with that, and that's why Emeryville should set the standard here. Oakland has told us here that they made a mistake, that they didn't raise their wage high enough, and that they're going to revisit this soon and raise it higher. So I think Emeryville should set the bar, set the standard, and get Oakland and Berkeley to rise up to meet us. So there should be a regional approach, and we should do that by a pathway, a quick pathway to $15 an hour so the other cities can meet our bar, and so we can have a regional approach. I agree with that. Minimum wage increases are extremely popular in the United States and extremely popular in Emeryville, and we know that from the measure, Measure C. And I just urge you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
John.
Hi. My name is Ricardo Vasquez, and I worked in Oaks Corner for seven years. And I'm so happy to work there, you know, it's like my second house. But I pay a lot of money from my pocket on health insurance, and I can support my kids. I have three kids, my wife, myself. And my check, I got like $350 every two weeks, so, you know, I can afford to take care of my kids. So, you know, I can afford to take care of my kids. So I hope I can get a better benefits, you know, health, health insurance, and then I support the minimum wage too. I appreciate it. I hope, you know, you guys can do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John.
Hi. My name is John Nimmick, and I'm a former resident of Emeryville. I was, I saw you in Watergate, that's where I lived, and you may remember Paula Turkat, who was my friend. And I do support increase in minimum wage. We started our business in Morgan Mandy Times in 1977, and the minimum wage was about $2, you know, an hour at that time. And we had no problem adjusting to increases in minimum wage. And, you know, we still, we will increase our minimum wage. However, the jump from $9 to 1443 plus nine days of paid sick leave, it increases your payroll cost by about 61%. Now, we have 50 employees, you know, half of the employees basically work for more than $14 an hour, some make $50,000 an hour, some have been there for 20 years, working for me, and they work for minimum wages. They, some of them, they managed to buy a house for themselves, they have investment property, and they did not find their minimum wage as a poverty wage, as the gentleman suggests. When I came to this country, I didn't think the minimum wage was poverty wage, ever. Before I came here, I always thought that people like, you know, that work for me, like from India, from Mexico, whatever, we found the minimum wage to be a luxury. If you talk about minimum wage to the people in the world, there would be a line law on 20 million people, and they would be kissing everybody in America to be able to work for a minimum wage. Anyhow, so what I'm thinking is, if you do it gradually, and if you do it, you know, on the level like other cities, so for example, New York City, which in my view is most expensive city to live in, what do you think the minimum wage is in that city? Now, it was just increased by, I had an article from, from mayor of, city of the, mayor of New York, they increased it to 1125. In gentleman's view, those are poverty wages. Maybe he can run a business and pay more money. We compete with China. We don't compete with hotels around the block. We compete with China. We cannot compete with people, novartis, or, you know, the big money people. The big money people in this city, they have no problem. They'll swallow it. It's a small business that you're burying. There'll be dozens of businesses bankrupt along St. Pablo Avenue. You can bet on it. And I can tell you that doing such a steep increase of 60% is unmanageable, unrealistic, and irresponsible. I, I request that you increase it gradually, in a similar pattern like maybe Oakland, or maybe San Francisco, or New York City. Thank you, John. Thank you.
The, the last speakers we have, if you'll line up, are Courtney Logue, Lai Gui, Kwong of Joyce Jacobson, and Rob Arias.
Hi, how are you? Hi. So I just want to say that I am not a business owner, nor do I live here. But I work for a man, Jonas Bernstein, who owns Rotten City Pizza, and is also opening Branch Line Bar on 59th and Pelladue. I am currently his project manager and future GM of Branch Line. And what I really want to say, and I think what I brought from, what I've come to understand from this entire, you know, I guess, learning experience here, is that while I appreciate you guys are thinking about an exemption for tips, I support that movement, and I also believe that you guys should think about the competition of other cities versus Emeryville. Because in reality, 60% is huge. That's a huge flux. And if you look at the business model of a restaurant, or any bar, our margins are very, very slim. And I don't think that you guys are really thinking about the cost structure behind every single business. And I just, you know, I personally, I've always thought of Emeryville as sort of this great little niche to do business in. And doing something drastic like this is huge. I, this is my own personal opinion, this isn't my boss's opinion. This is someone who really believes that there is no way that that is feasible, and that people will go out of business. That you should really consider some sort of timeframe to implement this huge influx, and give businesses time to adjust and time to grow. And so that way, everyone can prosper. Because I know that what you guys are looking for is a little bit more to eat in Emeryville. I know that's a problem for you guys. And just foot traffic in general, it doesn't really exist. And if you want it to exist, and you want Emeryville to start feeling like community and not warehouses, then I would not do that. And I would, you know, really think about the effect it will have on just the actual business models themselves, and how that could not factor in. Thank you.
I'll be providing translation for Lai Gui Kwong, so I request that we have that time added in. Thank you.
My name is Lai Gui Kwong. I've worked as a dishwasher at the Oaks Corner for 10 years.
I make $11.17 an hour. And right now, I have to pay $533 a month for my health insurance. And because my hours are being continuously cut, there was even a time recently when I brought home a check that had $2. This was for working for two weeks. The managers told me that business was bad at the Oaks. There was even a supervisor that told me, if you complain about this, then I'm gonna fire you. So I'm asking the city council to immediately raise the minimum wage at least to 1410, and this is so that workers at the Oaks can actually survive on what we make there. That's all. Thank you. And I want to add that if you think that this is an outrageous situation, we're having an action on Saturday at the Oaks at 4:30, and I hope everybody can make it.
Joyce Jacobson for Admiral Drive. I'm a resident of Emeryville. I want to thank the staff for that presentation of the whole minimum wage issue. It was an excellent presentation, and I learned a lot, and, and got a much better idea of what everybody is talking about. I very much favor increasing the minimum wage, and have felt that way for a long time. I would personally like to see us go to the 1225 level that is being used by our neighboring communities. That's what makes sense to me. And I've also talked with other people who live here, and they pretty much have the same Me personally, I'm on a, I'm, I'm retired, and I have a very much of a fixed income. My fixed income comes primarily from a fairly small pension and a social security, and the pension hasn't gone up at all in more than eight years, so it's still the same as it was, you know, quite a few years ago. And social, social security goes up at 2% a year, so to get a 60% raise will take me about 25 years. I hope I'm still here. Well, it just occurred to me, I might not be. So I know in spite of that UC Berkeley study, that I'm gonna have a direct impact, impact. It may just be a few dollars here and a few dollars there, but it's gonna add up to something that I'll feel every month. But I want to go to the 1225 level. Then the other thing, I sat there looking at your time schedule, and I thought, you're gonna have to have miracles on your staff to get them to meet that time schedule. How are they going to do that work that's required? And then somebody else mentioned that the community itself needs a little bit of time to absorb it. So I hope you will think about whether or not Emeryville really needs to be the leader way out there for the entire country, probably, or, or whether we should go to a good decent increase and give the staff the kind of time that they need. And again, thank you for the wonderful presentation.
Hi, I'm Rob Arias. I write the Evil Eye Community News, and also on the Park Avenue District Committee. Coming here is speaking to you as a resident who patronizes local businesses, a lot of them small, almost every day. I eat out in Emeryville way more than I care to admit, so I'm speaking from that perspective as somebody who patronizes small business and wants to keep them here, as many of them as possible. So I wrote a post recently, I hope you had the chance to read it, from a perspective of small businesses in Emeryville. If you, I have quotes from seven small businesses from within Emeryville, and their perspectives on what this would do to their business. It's not all positive, so I encourage you to read it on your own time, to get a, an entire spectrum of this argument. So since the city opted to eliminate its own community poll, what I was told, I decided to hold my own. I asked the question, do you support or oppose Emeryville's proposal for a minimum wage hike from $9 to 14? It was 14 at the time, I guess it's 1442. 44% of those who took the poll were in favor of it, while 56% opposed it. The 34 that opposed it favored a more gradual hike. 17 advocated for a more industry-specific hike, so. In the post, I also tried to count the retail small businesses in our city. I asked staff, I asked the Chamber of Commerce, but they didn't keep track of these things. Retail establishments in Emeryville. The list I came up with was nine businesses, nine retail businesses. In a way, weeded those down, so the businesses that just had a retail presence, it was basically one. So I just started asking myself the question, is Emeryville doing enough to support small business? I think the question that Emeryville needs to ask itself is, does Emeryville prefer hot Italian pizza, or does it prefer Little Caesar's? Does Emeryville prefer Doyle Street Cafe, or does it prefer Denny's? Does Emeryville prefer Prize Fighter or Elephant Bar? Does Emeryville prefer Farley's in Scarlet City, or does it prefer Starbucks? If the answer's yes, then we need to ask what we can do to encourage small business in our city, not discourage it. The more barriers we put up for small business, the fewer small businesses we will draw and will exit our community. When I interview small businesses, I always ask them what their experiences was in dealing with the city of Emeryville. You might be surprised to hear that it's generally been that of disappointment and frustration. You might also be surprised to hear that some of the businesses I spoke with actually had an easier go of it in Oakland. Oakland, yes, the city we often compare ourselves to. They're the tortoise, and we're the hare. Well, you might be surprised to know that that might not be the case anymore. We're the, we're the tortoise now. And Oakland's the hare.
Are there any other people that would like to be heard on this issue? Would you come forward, please?
Hi, my name is Finley Robbins. I'm also a resident, living at Watergate, and I always enjoy listening to Joyce, and I basically second everything that she said. I'm, I'm very concerned that the residents aren't taken into consideration and the impact on them. I also live on a very limited fixed income of social security. And the impact of this, though, I totally support an increased minimum wage. I wish they'd had it when I was first starting out. I did end my career very well, but in the beginning, it was absurd. Dollar, I can't even remember, $1.49 that I earned. So I totally support it, but I really feel that 60% jump is, is, it's too much. But listening to the people who are earning the lesser amount, I'm very torn about it. Because I have trouble meeting and, and making my way on such a limited income, and with such giant increases, makes it really hard. So I hope that you take into consideration that it will impact all the residents, because all costs are gonna go up for us in Emeryville, as store owners and business, businesses pass that cost down to the consumers. So I appreciate, and I know the need for it, but I think it should be tempered, and I would propose the 1225 an hour, and not as aggressive a timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Finley. Okay, if you want to speak, you better get up here. Time is running out.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Jorge, y vengo a apoyar el salario mínimo que es de 14 dólares.
Hi, my name is Jorge. I work at the Oaks, and I've come here to speak in favor of the minimum wage.
He trabajado in Oak's Corner por 12 años, pero tengo problemas con mi aseguranza que es de 535 dólares.
I've worked at the Oaks Corner for 12 years, and I have a, a big problem there, which is with my insurance, and which I also pay $533 a month.
En segundo cheque me quedan 300 dólares, y estoy muy preocupado para la familia. Que voy a hacer para llevar comida, para ayudar a mis hijos, y estoy tratando de conseguir otro porque no me alcanza.
That means in a single paycheck, I take home about $300, and I'm very worried, because I don't know how I'm gonna feed my family and my kids and provide for my family, and I'm currently looking for another part-time job. I think that everybody, that all of us deserve a better wage. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, council members. My name's Eric Bennett. I'm the general manager at Rotten City Pizza. I'm just here because I would like, I do support a minimum wage increase, but for small businesses like us, this is something that I would like if it were gradual, and I like the idea of the exemptions, even though I know it is legal in California for that. But we have about eight or nine delivery drivers, and about a third of our business is from deliveries. And that's really hard for us to compete without passing on all the costs to the customer, for us to raise every single driver who makes tips and makes, you know, well over $14 an hour already with tips. But if, if we have to increase all their wages to 14, we either have to lose employees or, and/or raise our prices by over 20%, which will be hard for us to compete and stay in business. So I just want you to think about the effect on small business. Obviously, a lot of these larger companies, it's not that big a deal, but, you know, we operate on a very thin profit margin, and I just want you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. One more. All right.
Mi nombre es José Vasquez, y trabajo en el Oaks Corner. Nosotros estamos apoyando lo que es el incremento salarial.
My name is Jose Vasquez. I also work in the Oaks Corner, and we're supporting an increase in the minimum wage here in Emeryville.
Nosotros tenemos la unión, y este, en la parte de la, de la carroom, ellos no tienen unión. Ellos están queriendo también incremento salarial, y no pueden venir a reclamar porque no tienen unión.
And so I work in the Oaks Corner, where we do have a union, but our coworkers in the Oaks Card Club don't have a union. And so I want to speak in support of them here today too, who, and they couldn't come today because they don't feel comfortable speaking without a union.
Yo veo que San Francisco ya tiene un incremento salarial, veo que Oakland tiene incremento salarial, y Berkeley tiene incremento salarial. Entonces, Emeryville sería justo que también tuviéramos un incremento salarial.
So San Francisco, Berkeley, and Oakland have all had increases in the minimum wage, and we think it's only fair that it also increases here in Emeryville.
Eso sería todo. Gracias.
That's all. Thank you.
All right. We'll take it.
I have a letter from a local business center. She wasn't able to attend. Is it something I can read?
Is it Scarlet City?
Scarlet City, yes.
We have it.
We have that.
We do, yeah.
Thank you, Rob.
Would it be okay to read it to everyone else? I mean--
It's entered into the record.
It is?
It's in the record. Now, how will we proceed from now, Michael? Bring it back to the council for discussion? I think if you can put those questions up on the board--
Sure.
--that'll be very helpful. And thank you all for coming and expressing your opinions on this. Extraordinarily helpful.
So Vice Mayor Davis, in terms of proceeding, so before you, you have the questions that staff has posed to the council about further direction on the ordinance. And certainly at this point, if you have any further questions of staff, we are available for that as well.
How would the council like to proceed on this? Shall we go point by point and see if there's a consensus here on--
On these issues?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I would be fine with that.
All right, on the definition of the employee, you start off, Scott.
I think we should use the Oakland definition. I think that it's clear, and I think it says something about our intention to honor all workers.
I agree with that, absolutely.
I agree with that, too.
Second.
Diane. All right. The cap on the accrual of paid sick leave, 48 hours or six days, or 40 slash 72. Distinguish between small business employers and all other employers. We'll start with you, Diane.
Michael, could you remind us what--
Sure.
Could you give a little clarification on what the difference between Oakland's lift-up measure and AB 1522?
Let me bring back that slide.
And what's on our draft ordinance?
Sure.
Michael, before you start--
Yes.
--I just want to clarify for the audience. There will not be a decision tonight on the ordinance. This will move forward. This is just providing the framework for staff to bring forward to the community and bring back to public meetings and the business community. So this is essentially a rough draft. Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. So maximum hours accrueable. So the Oakland ordinance provides a distinction between small businesses, which are 10 or fewer employees, and all other employers. For small businesses, those employees can earn up to 40 hours of paid sick leave a year. All other employers are, employees of all other employers can earn up to 72 hours a year. AB 1522 provides that an employee may earn up to 48 hours per year, regardless of the size of the employer. So AB 1522 doesn't make a distinction between small businesses and other businesses. The draft ordinance that we've presented to you is proposed 72 hours for all employers, regardless of the size of the employer. So we do not, the draft ordinance in your packet does not make a distinction between small business and non-small business. That term is not defined in the draft ordinance.
So I think where I land on that is I would propose, if you would entertain it, to draw a distinction between small business and bigger businesses here. However, I still want to arrive at what is a small business in Emeryville.
Right, I think that's a discussion we need to have.
Yeah, right.
Diane, I have to agree completely with you. What Rob demonstrated with his kind of micro approach to it, we've been talking for years and years about how we want to support, encourage small business, and we've got to give them a little hand here. We don't want to make it so draconian that they either go out of business or just struggle or don't even choose to come to Emeryville in the first place. So I agree with you, Diane.
I'm supportive of that as well, that distinction. Although, for me, understanding what we're going to define as a small business is very important--
Exactly.
--because I'm not interested in chains, for example, being included under that category.
I also agree with that.
So thank you for raising that, because that then becomes the next question to the council, is how do you want to define small business? If we could get some direction, is it, so again, Oakland defines it as 10 or fewer employees. If that's the metric you'd like to use, or if you would, you know, Michelle had mentioned that there are other methods of employing, of demonstrating what a small business is. And so if you could provide us some direction as to how you would like that definition.
I would be comfortable starting with the Oakland definition, knowing that this is a draft ordinance that is going out to the public and is going to get feedback and giving staff the time to talk to the public and the various committees about the alternatives. But what's in front of me to begin with is a place to start.
There's another point I'd like to make in reference to what Jack said about she doesn't want chains. We have to be very careful about what is a chain--
Right.
--because if Farley's has three businesses and Canfield Cafe has another installation in Oakland, they're not, in my mind, the big chains. And we want to make clear that we're not prohibiting those. That happened in San Francisco.
Yes, I know.
And we don't want to do that. We don't want to go down that road, I don't think.
So perhaps to make it clear then, as a starting point, the next iteration of this that we bring to the council would introduce the definition of small business, and we would, if I'm hearing you correctly, and we would define that as 10 or fewer employees within the city of Emeryville. So if therefore, you know, Farley's, for example, has multiple locations, Emeryville, Oakland, San Francisco--
But does that, how does that affect franchises, then?
I, well--
So, I'm sorry, I just wanted to sort of interject on, you know, as I mentioned, there are multiple definitions of small business and different organizations. So it is, the city can decide. I just wanted to bring forth a more specific what the SBA defines it as. Now, they actually go through each industry. It's a very 46-page table of every single industry, and they define small business based on either number of employees or gross receipts, but they vary it based on that. But their sort of overall generalized definition, I think, gets to some of Councilmember Asher's concern. They define it as a business that is independently operated and owned, it's organized for profit, and it is not dominant in the field. So sort of as a, as an initial starting point.
I really, I would like staff to do some more work on that definition. For me, it feels like 10 or fewer is a placeholder, but I, and I'm willing to hear, I don't need it settled right now. Right, that's where I'm at.
Well, it is exactly a placeholder, and it's going to go out into the business community, and I believe we'll hear loud and clear--
I think we're going to see some people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
You know, I actually just wanted to pause for a moment. Did Ruth have any notes that she wanted to share with us that will, may impact the bullet points?
Yeah, sorry. So I do have an email from the mayor, just apologizing she had a long-scheduled excused absence. She does lay out some items that she wants to just have discussion on, but we did cover all of those in our questions that we're putting in front of you. So there's nothing in here that she says, takes a specific position on--
Okay.
--just lays out items that she wants to make sure you all provide clarity on.
Okay, very good.
Okay, move along.
Okay. Let me bring back. All right, there we go. Okay, this is not helping me. Hold on.
Oh, no. What were the other questions?
Are you getting it?
Did Dave give us any assistance here?
You are completely frozen.
All right. All right, let me just orally give you the next question. Let's see, maximum now, maximum number of hours of usable paid sick leave a year. So this is, the question is, do you want to set a limit on how many hours an employee may actually use of their paid sick leave that they've accrued per year? So as a reminder, city of Oakland's ordinance does not provide any limits that an employee is able to use up to the maximum, up to the number of hours that they have banked for of paid sick leave per year. The state statute provides that there is a 24-hour limit, so an employee may use only up to 24 hours of paid sick leave a year, regardless of how much that employee has banked.
You're talking about 1522?
1522 does, yes.
Oakland.
I think we should go with Oakland.
Oakland's, yeah.
If you accrue it, it's yours.
Yeah.
Moving along.
All right. Next is the use of paid sick leave. So the question is, who may, who's included in the definition of family member?
The expansive one. The most expansive one is the one I'm interested in.
Agreed.
You get to designate.
Yes.
Yes, I agree with that.
Well, I don't agree with you guys, but I think it should be in there, and we should send it out into the business community to see what the impact of that type of a requirement would be. Right now, I don't have enough information to say, but always in my mind is the fact that we really want to nurture small business. And I, for one, don't want to be one to put the dagger in their throat. So we'll have it in there, because you've got three votes, but--
Okay.
For me, I'm more interested in just alternative family formations and the kind of flexibility that that would allow.
Okay.
But yes, I want to hear back from folks, too.
All right, so we'll keep it in there for the next iteration--
Right, right.
--and for further discussion. Okay, so the next question for the council is the start date for the use of paid sick leave. The Oakland ordinance and AB 1522 provide that there is a, that the use of paid sick leave begins 90 days after the effective date of those particular ordinances. So the question is, would the city council like to allow employees to begin, if you remember, employees will begin to accrue paid sick leave at the rate of one hour for every 30 hours worked. So the question is, do you want to allow them to start using paid sick leave sooner than the 90-day mark? Post-effective date.
And the Oakland one is the 90 days, too, right? They follow that.
Oakland and AB 1522 provide for a 90-day--
I propose we go along with that for the draft.
Yeah, for the draft, we'll do that.
Feedback we get.
All right. So those are my questions. I think Michelle has had that last slide with some additional questions.
And what, Michael, while you're up, may I ask a question?
So I saw you, perhaps you were Googling or researching tip credit--
Yeah, yes.
--and our labor code.
Sure.
And just to either substantiate or refute what was mentioned in public comment--
No, absolutely.
--in regards to legality.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I will also emphasize what Vice Mayor Davis had mentioned, that this is a draft ordinance, right? This is a work in progress, and there's some additional analysis that will need to be done before we provide you with the final version. With that disclaimer in mind, it's true, there is no, there is no tip credit. The labor code does prohibit the use of tip credit in California. You know, I think one of the things that staff is struggling with is what to do, or how to accommodate or account for the fact that employers, or that employees receive tips. And I think that you were hearing some of that from some of the business representatives here tonight. I will note that the Oakland ordinance, the Berkeley ordinance, and the San Francisco ordinance is regarding minimum wage, do not, do not speak to tips, right? And so the idea is that regardless of whether or not an employee actually earns, you know, earns tips or not, there is that minimum wage that is applied. And so the, presumably, an employee that earns tips would earn the minimum wage plus the tips that they receive as part of that employment. So, I mean, I'm going to put this as sort of a placeholder for us to continue, you know, continue further research and refinement in the ordinance, and we'll have a more, you know, refined analysis for you at the next time you see this.
Moving along.
Moving along?
Okay.
So the next set of questions are from that last slide, and it specifies the issue that we were talking about, exemptions and phased implementation. So they've sort of been bunched together in this particular set of questions. And if you want to consider, and to be included in the draft ordinance that goes out, exemptions or phased implementation, if you could sort of specify one or the other for either nonprofits, internships, training programs, small businesses, with the caveat that the definition of small business needs to be further refined. Obviously, the issue regarding businesses with tips is to be further discussed, as well as the concept of total compensation regarding businesses that also provide health And then the questions go through, the implementation timeline. Sadly, we're going to have to go low-tech, so if you want to see that implementation timeline, I'll flip to the paper again. And then just general changes and revisions.
Scott, do you start off on this one?
Well, I have a, I'd just like to go to my list of other things that they talked about, like the, I like the idea of this, of the city enforcing our own, that we wouldn't--
Oh, oh, no, no. Let's answer these questions first, and then we'll go on to those--
Can we answer an easy one? Like, is the implementation timeline proposed by staff acceptable? Like, maybe can we start there? Because the other ones seem a little more--
Well, you know, if we're thinking about a draft, do we want to take a hard look at the burden this places on nonprofits who are struggling anyhow? And, you know, their grants that they get, they, some businesses can turn around on a dime and maybe make changes by July 1st. Nonprofits, I don't know whether that's possible. The other thing is, on the internships and the training programs, if we're really going to be doing the job I hope we're going to be doing with the Emery Unified School District, we want to encourage those internships and those part-time training availabilities. So I would very much like to see a focus on at least examining how we could do this, not to say, no, they would never do the minimum wage, but phase it in over a longer period of time, so the impact would not be so dramatic on them.
Well, I could talk about a phase in, but for me, it's contingent upon the question of where we're landing on the wage. So that's, that's the question I would want to go to, I think, first, before we talk about the phases. But I share some of your, not so much with the internships and training programs, because I work at the university and I see what happens, like suddenly thousands of internships bloom, right? And they do not pay nearly enough for the kind of work that they're asking for. But certainly nonprofits, which are on a grant cycle, I would be interested in doing that. And also small businesses. But again, for me, it's contingent upon where we're landing for the draft, so.
And Vice Mayor, I will mention Berkeley, in Berkeley's ordinance, they have a one-year phase in for nonprofits, just for some context.
See, that's kind of what I'm looking for, to not just put them in some kind of rigid type of place, but the ability to work their way through and work their way forward. What do you say, Diane?
I'm also open to intelligent phasing, but I'm not necessarily, at this time, interested in exemptions. I think for this draft ordinance, I think we should move forward without any exemptions and get the input--
Focus on phasing?
Well, I'm open to phasing, and, you know, we are a small city. This is where we can have a strength, is looking at the businesses--
This is where we can have a strength, is looking at the businesses that need our help. And because we don't have a history of reaching out to these small businesses and making it easier for them to really flourish, I think now is a very good starting point, where in conjunction with raising the minimum wage, we can, as a city, decide that we want to protect these businesses, that we want to see them flourish, that we want to send a message that we are not out to put everyone out of business, that we, we...
I fully agree with this.
We want these things to happen together. So we don't, we don't need to throw the baby out with that.
May I offer a couple of things? I've been talking to a few of the small businesses in town, and I agree, we talk constantly about how we want more locally-owned small businesses in town. And I think it's time to, to commit to them, that as we phase in, that the city will also ramp up to finally do something. I think we need to stop the subsidy to the chamber. And I think we need to devote our efforts to a small business liaison in, in town and to make sure that we're, we're really building up a kind of support network for them, that I don't think that they have had up, up until this point. So, in addition to, if we're going to talk about phasing, which I, first, I need to land on what the wage is, I, I think that we need to make this other commitment to support small businesses as they, as they grow and, and as they pay a fair wage. Because I've heard from several of them, they, you hear them step up here, right? They, they want to pay a fair wage and they want to do right by their employees.
There are things in particular about the restaurant business that we, I think we really need to address. They are very vulnerable. And one citation from a health standard, missing, not followed up with quickly, could really put a business under. So if we're going to, we, we need to help a small business get through a health citation and really make sure that they can do it quickly. Maybe we can do something in Emeryville that other cities can't do for restaurants. Maybe we can allow people to take their wine and beer right out on the sidewalk without having to, you know, just have all these laws broken.
I got the chief shaking his head over there.
He violations, say no.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just fishing out there. I'm trying to make, you know, Emeryville has a history of the...
A draft, a draft.
A draft, yes.
Okay, Michelle, have you, have you gotten a clear sense of direction here?
Well, we still need to...
No. No. So for, for the, the draft, as it's written right now, does not include any exemptions or phase in. So do you want us to go ahead and put it out there without any of those items and get the feedback, and then you would adjust it from there? Or do you want to explicitly put some into the language that we send out? I think that, we need some direction on that.
That's the question. What will the draft look like? Yes.
So nonprofits, for example?
Well, I, I would support a phasing for the nonprofits and the small businesses and the internships and the training.
I still need to know what wage we're landing on to begin the conversation.
Okay, let's talk about that.
Yeah.
$15 by 2018. Is that good enough?
How, how do we get there? What does the path look like? Because one thing that we're, when we're talking about, and people keep saying 1443, 1443, we realize that that is only $27,000 a year, right? That's all that it is. And you cannot, you cannot live in Emeryville on $27,000 a year, right? We provided this handout that shows the hourly wage that a person would make in order to qualify at every income level according to area median income, right, for our housing. And you can see that this is, and this is if you get your 40-hour work week, which, you know, good luck. Extremely low income, you would, that person makes $983 an hour. And we know we don't have enough units under extremely low income in Emeryville. $1638 is very low income, right? We don't even have the, the housing, right? If you made $1638 an hour. I think that when I, when we're talking, the difference between 1225 and 1443 is a little less than $350 a month. And what that means, what I'm hearing from folks when they come up here, is that that's health insurance, right? Or that could be after-school care for your child. And lifting up the wage floor, it, one of the things that it does is it stops the kind of subsidizing that government and your city government, right, is providing for people who don't pay a fair wage. So when people cannot afford to send their children to after-school care, but they have to work, the city's going to make a calculation and we're going to pay for that service, right? So the idea that somehow we're all lowering our costs or protecting ourselves with refusing to get to a living wage, right, on a, what, what I would say is a really urgent timetable, is not looking at the wider picture. The other thing is that low-wage workers are not taking their earnings and hiding it in, you know, Europe somewhere. It's not happening. They're spending it immediately, right? It goes right back out into the community. Oftentimes, it'll go into the places where they work, right? And the communities where they work. And so this is a way to grow the economy in a more broad-based fashion, right, with a direct effect on the lowest-paid workers. Lowest, low-paid workers contribute to the economy, right? They're not just taking. And for me, I, I think that we spent a lot of time building Big Box. Boy, do we, we're ringed by it. And I go in there, because I, I'll admit it, I shop at Target, right? I'm there too often. And I sit there and I, I look at the folks who are working at Target, and they don't have any protections in terms of their scheduling, right? They churn through employees. I don't know that I ever see the same folks there.
That's true.
And we're asking people to live on a wage that there's no way they could survive on in our town, right? And so we brought this kind of business to town, and then we haven't made that business, right, pay a fair wage. Instead, we're just subsidizing it, right, through our own programming. So for me, I, I, I understand the distinction between small business, and I want, I want small businesses in Emeryville. I, we need to do so much more. It's one thing I've appreciated about this conversation, is sitting down with small business owners and talking about what they need from the city, and I want to do more of that. But for me, $27,000 a year is, it's, you know, $14, that's still not enough to live on. And I, I, I know that people feel comforted by a regional minimum wage, but the folks got up here and told us that that was an arbitrary number, right? It was just one that they, they picked because they, they thought they could get enough political momentum behind it. And what we're arguing for is a wage that will give dignity to people, right? And allow them to not live off of subsidies and not have the city subsidize businesses in this way. Give it directly to the workers, right? And don't subsidize through the low wages of businesses. So for me, the, the phasing in, I'm very interested, especially if what we're talking about is 1443, right? As that, as, as the living wage. I think we need to move toward it. I mean, the idea that Bill de Blasio is only offering $13 in New York City, I don't know where, that, that is another arbitrary number, right? That's not tied to anything. I want us to do it with, with a reason. And going to 1225 is just adopting an arbitrary number because we know the arbitrary number is something that can pass politically. And I just want to have, I want to have the discussion about what it really means to pay a living wage and to treat workers fairly in Emeryville. And so I, you know, 1443 is where I'm, I'm landing on the, on the wage.
I think that's a worthy target. I think we should keep 1443 in the draft ordinance and see where it lands with the public. Because this is not the end of the discussion.
It's not, it's the draft.
This is a draft. This is, you know, to solicit comments from those who are going to be affected. And, you know, all of us have been contacted by businesses, and we will continue to be contacted by businesses and by workers alike. And we want to hear from businesses and workers and, and see how this is going to play out. And I, I support 1443 for the current draft.
I really like the staff-proposed phase in over that 18 months.
For, for...
Everyone?
Do you want to? Yeah, do you want to specify?
I liked it for everyone to phase in at that rate. I also would like to have something, staff research, something about scheduling. Look at what other cities are doing about scheduling. Because a lot of restaurant workers especially work part-time. And if they cannot predict when their work is, they can't schedule other jobs. And a lot of people need to do that. And so I, I think also we have to address that issue. Because that's, that's a, a real issue that is especially true in, in the restaurant industry and in lower-wage work. And I've just seen what happens sometimes in retail, where workers have to just stay by the phone, they can't do another job, and their current job is, doesn't give them enough hours. And so it's sort of like, we can give somebody a higher wage, but we can make the life worse without some kind of scheduling issues in some cases. So I just want, I want the staff to look at that.
Well, one of the things, though, with trying, with raising the wage, is that workers actually become more valuable, right? And then it becomes an issue of, does the, does the employer want to, is it cost-effective for them to try and churn through people as opposed to creating full-time work? And so actually, as you're, as you're raising the wage floor, the thing that you're looking for, I'm looking for lots of things, by the way, but the thing, one of the things you're looking for is to create more full-time jobs. There are other things that we're looking for here in terms of giving employees more of a voice, the ability to organize or negotiate. And for me, the, the phase in is for everybody. I'm, I'm not sure why we would negotiate with our, ourselves to such a low level at this point. Instead, I think, why, why can't we especially talk to people, right, about the, the higher wage? And think through some of these effects that we're talking about? Because there, you can make an adjustment to business models, and I also think that there's a way to preserve and protect the folks that, in small businesses, in, in restaurants, right, in particular, with the phase in. I don't, I don't know that Big Box needs a phase in. I'm just not sure that they're, that they're, they're needing that.
Yeah, if I could jump in and we'll move this along. Philosophically, Scott, I agree with you. I think a phased in would bring us more information coming in. However, I'm going to go along with Jack and Diane, because I think if you put that 1443 in there, you're going to get more attention from this group that you, you really want to pay attention to and nurture and protect. That's the small business people. This is like giving somebody an uppercut. So let's put it in the, in the draft and see what kind of a response we get. But I'm, my inclination in the final, final, is to go certainly with a more phased-in approach. Makes more, makes more sense all the way around. Because we are not sure that the actions that we're taking at 1443 are a benefit or a detriment. You talk about to make more full-time jobs for people. We may hear from the small business people that instead of more full-time jobs, they will be eliminated jobs. We don't know. We don't have that information. Let's move along to the next question.
So, so to be clear, we're putting in the 1443 with no, with no phase in?
Right.
Got it.
Or no small business.
So just to clarify, no, no small business phase in and no phase in?
No consideration for small business.
No consideration for nonprofits or, or small business?
No, that is not what I said. I said that it was contingent upon the wage. And so 1443, if that's the wage we're landing on, then certainly I'm talking about the phase in for small businesses and for the, and for the nonprofits.
I am along with that. And again, let's come up with a strong definition for small businesses, like the ones that presented tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, what else do you need, Michelle?
I have one more comment.
The timeline? Yeah, so the implementation timeline. Let me just put that up. So this was the proposed implementation timeline. And I think part of it too is, there's been a lot of discussion here at the council just now about obtaining additional input from, from small businesses and the community. And this timeline does not have any sort of specific working groups or a specific meeting aside from a discussion of this item by the Economic Development Advisory Committee. As I indicated, the, the plan would be to post the draft ordinance and invite comment directly if they wanted to, you know, anyone wanted to call us or send us letters, that would be how we would, we would gather information rather than, and feedback, as well as post it on the website, rather than having a coordinated meeting. So if you wanted to include some sort of more active...
But, but what about March 17th? Aren't, wouldn't we, for example, when we send out the draft ordinance, let people know that the next meeting where we're going to discuss it is March 17th?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Diane, how do you feel about the implementation schedule?
I, I think this is a fine schedule.
Scott, what do you say?
That looks good.
Okay, it's three to one, because I think this is, someone who was in the audience spoke out about this and said...
Joyce.
Oh, was it?
It was Joyce, yeah.
And I think we're asking, given everything else that's going on in the city, we are really asking our staff to go above and beyond, to stretch their limits. And it's not clear to me that the fastest is the best. And I would like to see a pushback from staff. When you say, yes, we can do this, what does that really mean? Yes, we can do this. We have all the resources we need. We have all the time. We'll get the full feedback.
I wish.
From the... Staff has got to learn to say no sometimes. That's all I'm saying.
So this timeline is based off of the direction that you all gave us the last meeting on July 1st. It is extraordinarily crunched, I will be honest with you about that. And we would need, we don't have sufficient resources, which is why we would ask for, you know, an amendment to the budget in order to do this, to get ourselves some help. It does not, you'll look at the timeline there, it does not give you very much time, frankly, to get the feedback from your businesses. So if we're sending things out, you know, we'll start working on this, you know, to get it out by the end of next week to all of our business license holders. It doesn't, if, and then if they're going to come back on March 17th, it doesn't give them a whole lot of time. I, you know, we put both dates up there. I would recommend actually the, the April 1st date, so that you do have more time for people to come forward. But what that does is it's going to back up the, the other, the city attorney's times to actually craft the ordinance, which I will have to refer to.
Are you really serious? You want to be, have this on... You want to be -- have this on April Fool's Day? I'd be against that.
And so, Michael--
13th and April Fool's Day. This is what we're doing.
Mr. Geena can speak to whether or not that gives the city attorney's office sufficient time to put things out there, but it -- yeah.
Right. So, and this is an aggressive timeline, and so, the amount of time that we'll need to incorporate all -- it's a little hard to say, because we don't know what the feedback from the community is going to be, nor do we know what the direction from the city council is going to be based on that initial, you know, based on either the March 17th or the April 1, you know, your feedback that you receive. We will be crunched in terms of being able to turn around a draft that, you know, meets all of those expectations. And what that, you know, what that will mean is that other projects that are in our pipeline will be pushed off and will be put on hold while we focus on this. And so, the direction, you know, part of the direction that we're looking for from the council that's implicit in this is that if this is the priority that you are, you know, if this is a priority for the council, for, you know, the city attorney's office as well as the rest of, you know, the city manager's office to focus on, then there should be -- we also would like to emphasize that other projects that we have will be delayed coming to you.
Yeah. I think, Nora, that what you're talking about, about checking in with staff, is a really good practice, and that we should do it every step of the way, and allow for staff to give us this kind of feedback and be honest with us about where we are.
We have to be realistic. We have a wonderful staff, very professional, very accomplished. The one problem is, they don't know how to say no. They don't know how to say, "Do you want to do this by July 1st? Are you people out of your minds?" If you want a reasoned, really thought-about, really chewed-up ordinance that people are able to punch into and really talk about, you're suggesting a timeline here that's compressing everything and not really, I believe, allowing for real consideration, real information, real back-and-forth discussion. February, as far as I'm concerned, we're already in June. I just wanted to bring that up. You have clear direction for three members of the council, but I do not believe this timeline serves either the staff, the council, or the people of this city, or the businesses in this city.
Well, and I -- I'm also interested in finding out how much business feedback we get. I'm -- I thought the chambers was going to be more full this evening, and--
Well, Jackie, you do understand. I have talked to many small businesses, and they do not want to come forward.
I understand that.
They don't want to go on record. They're afraid of the Yelp comment, "Oh, you're against the minimum wage."
And I understand that.
And they're not going to put their business at risk like that.
Right. But this is also a time for us to sit up here and remind everybody that one of the things that I take very seriously is that I will sit down with you and I will talk with you. And I'm going to be doing this work along this compressed timeline as well. But I think moving along and finding out what we get to on April 1st in terms of community input, it's -- each one of these dates is a point at which we can check in.
Right. That was the other thing I was going to throw out there, is that when we have either the meeting on March 17th or April 1st, we could certainly, you know, we'll have more information, and we can check back in with you. And if we, you know, if our recommendation is to push out the timeline in order to account for the information that we've received and the feedback--
Don't be shy.
--that we're getting from you folks, that's the message I'm hearing. So, I see that as an opportunity to check in with you and provide you with perhaps, you know, adjustments to that timeframe.
Guys, let me make one more pitch. Symbolically, I think it is a big mistake to have this on April 1st, and I'm not kidding. I'm not -- I'm really not kidding.
Really? Really?
No, I'm not. What could I say?
I mean, we're having a meeting on April 1st, right? I mean, we'll be here, right? Isn't that our regular council meeting?
Mm-hmm. It doesn't rise to the level of this particular issue.
Actually, the first meeting in April is on the 7th.
Is on what?
7th.
Then we're all clear.
April 1st is a Wednesday.
No, April Fool's. Is that correct?
We're off the hook, guys.
Oh, it's a typo. Okay. Well, there you go. It's just a typo. It's good.
Right. Michelle, do you have everything you need?
Black cats walking under ladders.
Are you sure?
I believe so.
Oh, and the enforcement, in-house enforcement, if you're okay with us keeping that in the way that we bring it.
When you say in-house enforcement, you -- what you mean is, we're not going to go with either Berkeley or Oakland to enforce that we are either going to hire someone or we're going to have a contractor do it?
Right.
I want to make that clear, that in-house enforcement, it's the choice.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, the final question was, if there were any other changes or revisions to the draft ordinance--
I think we went through them all.
--other than the ones that were brought up by staff.
Let me second Joyce Jacobson. You guys did a wonderful job. Good, clear, concise presentation.
It was a great staff report to read. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
All right, we're moving along to the next item. The city's housing successor has absolutely nothing. Communications and reports, department heads, Charlie. I know you want to say something.
We haven't had a planning commission meeting since your last meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Anyone else?
Vice Mayor Davis, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly announce that I'll be retiring from the city of Emeryville effective June 30th of this year. That'll be 40 complete years.
Forty -- nice round number, chief.
That is terrible news.
Did you start when you were 10?
Good Lord.
Yeah, that is bad news.
That's not good news. I do not appreciate that. All right. Any other staff members? Council members?
What comments?
I have -- council members reporting on meetings attended.
Not on meetings attended.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.